Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members and staff. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. This is the meeting of the Santee City Council Wednesday, April 26, 2023, at 6:30 PM. And tonight, we're going to start off with an invocation. And the invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Scotty James. And let me tell you a little bit about him first. Well, you can always come up here, that's all right. You just stand there and let everybody look at you. So Scotty is the lead pastor at Village Church, our neighbor on the north, at 10701 North Magnolia Avenue. Scotty did his undergrad work at San Diego State University. He went on to obtain his master's at the Indiana Wesleyan Seminary. And Scotty and his wife, Stephanie, are both from San Diego State. Well, that worked out pretty good for you, didn't you? As a matter of fact, they met in college. They've been married 15 years and have six beautiful children, ages 13 to one. They started the Village Church roughly two and a half years ago and are passionate about seeing people transformed by the gospel. If you worship the triune God, and I know you do, then please pray for our country, state, and city in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. And then, let's see, who wants to do the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards?
Sam.
Sam, it sounds good to me. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Your grace, thank you for this community of Santee and for the community leaders who would devote their time and energy to see that this community is healthy. It blesses my soul that I would be invited to pray before a council meeting. What a, what a privilege. And I pray you will bless this, this time. Please give these leaders guidance. May they make laws and structures and plans that would allow people to prosper. We also pray for our nation, that the leaders of our nation would, in many ways, repent and that they would begin to form laws and structures that would allow human flourishing rather than confusion and chaos. And so we depend on you. We realize any efforts that we put forth are only profitable with your blessing. And so we are asking your blessing both on this community and also on our nation. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
People of Santee, please join me in the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sam. You can always count on somebody to volunteer you. You know what I'm saying? De voluntold. Okay, let's see. Tonight, I have a pro- What's that?
Who's that guy?
Who's, oh. So tonight, we're going to do a proclamation. That's for Bike Anywhere Day on May 18, 2023. And Carl, you gonna accept that? And so why don't you go ahead and meet me down in front? We'll do that real quick. And then we're going to have a presentation after that by the East County Advanced Water Purification Project, Joint Powers Project. Testing, one, two, three. Can y'all hear me? Oh, I can hear myself. All right. Well, if I can hear myself up here, it usually means everybody else can. So what is, what is this all about? It's about being active in the community. I'll read a little bit here. Tells us a little bit more. Yes, that is me up there. I do ride a bike. I decided to ride from Santee up to Alpine and stopped in front of the sheriff's station there. You probably recognize that, right? So if I can do it, anybody can. So Santee Proclamation. Whereas the month of May is National Bike Month and May 18, 2023, is Bike Anywhere Day in San Diego region. And whereas there are nearly 1,800 miles of bikeways in the San Diego region, making the San Diego region one of the best places to explore local communities and go by bike to the beach, park, school, work, or local restaurants. Especially if they have someplace to lock your bike up outside. Go to the restaurants. Whereas biking is an emission-free and healthy transportation alternative for short automobile trips that reduces traffic congestion. And whereas the San Diego Association of Governments, also known as Sandag, is organizing Bike Anywhere Day on May 18, 2023 to encourage students, families, commuters, bike enthusiasts, and people new to biking to replace the automobile trip with a bike trip and pledge to go by bike to an official pit stop from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM on Monday, on May 18, 2023. So now therefore, I, John Minto, Mayor of the City of Santee, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 18, 2023 as Bike Anywhere Day in the City of Santee to commemorate a special day in May, which is a National Bike Month. And I'm going to present this to Carl because Carl works with our, our traffic engineer, who can't be here tonight. So congratulations. Do you have anything you want to say?
Just, just briefly. Just briefly, thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of Sandag, who asked us to actually work on this proclamation and in conformance with our active transportation plan and mobility element, you know, the city supports this and our traffic engineer and all the staff that ride bikes certainly support it. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. And thanks for accepting this on behalf of the city. And I'm going to give out a cheap shot plug here to my favorite bicycle store in Santee, which is Pedigo. So the best thing you can do is get on your bike that day and have a great Pedigo day. Give me just a minute here. I have to take off this microphone. All right, let's have Rebecca come up from the Advanced Water Purification Joint Powers and the Purification Project. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, sir.
Ken Simmons. Ken Simmons.
Okay.
I'll introduce Ken.
Thanks.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Rebecca Abbott. I'm an engineering manager with Potter Dam Municipal Water District, which is the agency administering the East County Advanced Water Purification Project on behalf of the East County Advanced Water Purification Joint Powers Authority. I'm here today with a colleague, Ken Simmons, to update the council and residents on the status of our project as well as some upcoming construction activities within the city. But first, I want to remind everybody what this project's all about and why it's important to everyone. It's about preserving our community's quality of life through regional water reliability. This project will create a new, local, sustainable, and drought-proof drinking water supply, reducing our region's reliance on imported water while eliminating treated wastewater discharge to the Pacific Ocean. This project will create up to 30% of East County's drinking water supply locally. There will also be a link to the project's website and contact information at the end of the presentation for more information. Now, onto the specifics. This map shows a few of the project's components within the city. In yellow is a three-and-a-half-mile-long alignment for two sewer conveyance pipelines. In blue is an alignment for a 10-mile-long, 24-inch steel purified water pipeline that will convey the purified water out to Lake Jennings Reservoir for surface water augmentation. Now, you have probably seen some construction in the city already along Mass Boulevard, Fenita Parkway, and down at the sewer pump station at the 125 and SR 52 interchange, as the contractors are preparing to place pipe in the ground. There's also been some ongoing and upcoming construction outside of the city's right-of-way, shown here, deep underneath the ground at Carlton Oaks Golf Course and through Santee Lakes. But here, I'm going to introduce you to Ken Simmons. Ken is an engineer with Potter Dam also and project manager for the purified water pipeline part of the project. And he's going to illustrate the construction activities that are upcoming in city streets. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Simmons. And as Rebecca just said, I'm the project engineer for the conveyance of the treated water line. That is the blue line that goes south on Fenita and east on Mass Boulevard. And as Rebecca said, it goes eventually out to Lake Jennings. She briefly said it's a 10-mile-long pipeline. It's 24 inches in diameter and it is steel. And wanted to speak tonight a little bit about how that affects the city of Santee. The first place that we'll be doing work is on the northern end of Fenita, going south. And that construction will begin very shortly, in May, and go through October, I'm sorry, through August of 2024. After that, we'll follow up, or soon thereafter, we'll follow up with work just south of here at Mass Boulevard in Magnolia. And that's an important area, because we all know that's next Santana School. And we've worked very closely with the school to have minimum impact, both for dropping off students, both by walking and for cars, as well as to minimize disruption to the school itself, which is actually a little bit of a segue to our next slide, which is on public outreach. That's a little bit of outreach that we've done specifically for Santana High School. Going again chronologically, we're also working on segments two and four, which segment two is south of segment one, continuing south on Fenita Parkway and eventually turning east on Mass Boulevard. And that construction is from September of '23 through May of 2024. And overlapping that, construction will be a second work crew with the same contractor out on the eastern section of Mass Boulevard. And that's on October of 2023 through March of 2024. And finally, we'll, missing piece there, the middle of Mass Boulevard, west of Santana High School, west of Magnolia, which we call segment three, which will begin at the end of this year in November and go through July of 2024. And just to depict that, again, this pipeline does continue east through the county area, segments five through 10. Segment five continues construction in May of '24 through January of 2025 and again continues out to Lake Jennings. The whole project being done in about two to two and a half years from now, at which point we'll then turn on the switch and convey potable water to augment Lake Jennings. As I started to describe briefly before, we've had a very extensive public outreach as we want to make sure the public is aware of the construction, both some of the highlights, as Rebecca pointed out earlier, to the benefits of East County, specifically Santee, as well as to let them know the upcoming construction. We're all aware that it can be very frustrating when you're trying to get to work on time and there's a construction going on. And there will be some disruption across the city as we're constructing. But we're working very diligently to keep that to a minimum and again, to have public outreach so that public is aware of when that happens so there's no surprises to anyone. On the right side of this slide, we've got a couple brochures that we have sent out to the public. We sent out close to a year ago now, when construction started, to all residents of the City of Santee. We're also continuing to send out pamphlets to individual locals that are close to construction to again, let them know where construction is happening near their housing. In addition, public outreach with brochures. We also have a website, which is included in the blue in the middle on the top. And that actually has a live update map, which explains the construction that's going on currently that we regularly update. We also have our email and phone number there. It's also presented with all of our brochures, that if people have questions for us, they can call in and let us know. We've had a very quick response time on questions, often within 24 hours and sometimes including on the weekends. Again, we've worked really hard to make sure the public understands both the project as a whole and how it will affect them. We also have a public outreach through public media, again, trying to just make sure that everyone is aware of what's happening and what, how it will affect them. That is our project as a whole. Are there any questions we can answer that can give you some more specifics?
Yeah, I actually have a question.
Please.
I have an opportunity to go out to Lake Jennings quite often. And this, I've seen it during what we would call drought periods and, and its level. And then I saw this last couple months ago or so, when we had the high volumes of runoff and experienced an extremely high level of water in the reservoir. So I guess the question is, what happened? We know that we have plenty of storage if we're purifying water during drought periods. But what happens when we have those high periods of runoff and we experience those high levels? Do we just keep filling the dam or do we have to, you know, let water out? What happens?
Ideally, we store all of the water. And that was part of our planning process, was to create enough storage or ensure that we have enough storage for our treated water. And obviously, when that water's coming in and if it's, and or when it's raining in high water points, less water will be bought from the San Diego County Water Authority. But that is part of the whole water storage process. That was part of the planning documents and the basis of design reports and through, up through construction right now.
I actually kind of get that. But I'm saying, though, do we slow down the production of purified water? Or do we just keep pumping it in there so we could just keep pumping it out?
Oh, the water has a continual source. So again, we need to continue producing that water. We do have emergency runoff if it is needed that can go out to the city of San Diego. But again, this is a resource, so we prefer not to do that. So we will continue to fill the reservoir as long as that's safe. If it gets to the point that it is overflowing or getting to that point, we do have mechanism, a fail-safe mechanism to release that water eventually out to the city of San Diego and as it is currently going out to the ocean. Obviously, due to economic reasons, we prefer not to do that.
I realize that. I just was thinking about, where's all that water going to go?
It's a great question. Thankfully, we've had some smart engineers on the planning and the design side who have also thought the same thing.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Others?
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's very interesting. I can't wait for that to come online. All right, then let's go to the calendar then. Do I have any, do I have any additions, corrections, or deletions? Ron?
No.
No.
No, sir.
Councilman McNellis? City Manager?
Just a quick reminder that item 11 has been pulled from your agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Any speaker slips?
Yes, sir. I have a speaker on one, two, three, and 10.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember McNellis and a second by Vice Mayor Koval. Please vote. Lock in your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Please call the speaker for number one.
Truth.
Hello, everyone. I barely made it here. Totally out of breath and everything, totally unprepared. Okay. So I'm back for my three minutes of fame. That's what's important. Maybe you should guys turn those lights down so, because I'm shining too bright. So it's item number one. For the fourth meeting in a row, it's about proving ordinances and resolutions by only reading the title rather than the entire contents. I've already struck this item out three times in order to home run it out of the city council chamber park, which, no, isn't as famous as Petco Park. But apparently, when I speak for three minutes here, the rumor is that I bring the fame so people will know it soon. So this all means that you guys are now in the negative with this item. It continues to be unethical, though lawful. Oh, yes, that's true. But the American way is that unjust laws are not laws at all. And so they should be considered null and void. To further elaborate on that point, here are words from Martin Luther King Jr.'s letter from a Birmingham jail, quote, "I would be the first to advocate obeying just laws. One has not only a legal but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." I would agree with St. Augustine that an unjust law is no just law at all. I'm sorry, no law at all. Now, what is the difference between the two? How does one determine whether a law is just or unjust? A just law is a man-made code that squares with the moral law or the law of God. An unjust law is a code that is out of harmony with the moral law. More and more, I feel that the people of ill will have used time much more effectively than have the people of goodwill. We will have to repent in this generation, not merely for the hateful words and actions of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people, end quote. And that's exactly why I'm willing to speak against this item even five times in my lifetime so far. Hopefully, never again. But silent consent lets the bad guys win. Thank you.
Motion to approve item one.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Please call the next speaker.
Truth.
Okay. Hello, this is still truth. Some people call me misinformation. Uh, here we go. Okay, so how many Manny bucks did the treasurer of laughter pay for funny monies? Did these council members spend in this item? The answer is a lot, but not on too many frivolous things. Here's a few questionable spending items. $5,198 is being spent to Harris and Associates, Inc. for the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the cannabis ordinance. What was interesting is it had initials, and I had to look it up what that meant. It was INSMD. I bet nobody knew what that meant. The cannabis consulting firm, Hinder Lighter, the Lamas, Lamas? and Associates surprisingly only got $187. It's pretty rare for a consultant firm, they usually get thousands. $2,143 is going to the city of Elkhorn for tablet command. I don't even know what that is. John here is getting $142 for travel reimbursement. That's nice. The San Diego Humane Society is getting over $36,000 a year, or sorry, this year. Considering how many animals they euthanize, kill every year, I'm not a fan of that spending. Over $6,600 is being spent on pet waste bags. I crap you not. Zero Waste USA, congratulations on that profit. And for the record, I literally found this fake dollar on the ground the other day and I waved it at the San Diego City Council as a joke. Everything comes into your life for a reason. Now, in tribute to Alan C., I yield back my time.
Motion to approve. Your second? I have a second by Vice Mayor Koval. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number three.
Truth.
In the legal services billing summary, under litigation and claims, the Affordable Housing Coalition of San Diego County is eco-extorsioning, credit to Laura here, over $2,000 out of the city of Santee. The sustainability cultists sure are annoying with their frivolous fraud. Under special projects from the City of Santee's General Fund, $1,938 is COVID American Destruction Plan Act-related. Funny how that fraudulent emergency has, was finally ended here after three years and yet the effects of the declarations continue. The fraud is the real virus. Coincidentally, another 100, or sorry, $1,938 is being wasted on the Community Oriented Policing Committee. Something ironic I noticed before is that that committee actually really lacks diversity. And I mean diversity in the real definition, not just skin color, but also in ideologies and perspectives. The safety environment justice element wasted $1,734. Nobody even knows what that element is, nor do they ever get affected by it. The short answer is, it's another climate change cult racket, insisted on by the state, of course, via Senate Bill 1000. And local government officials always acquiesce. Why is that? It used to be called just a safety element, but the more the cult takes over, the more things become smoggy, like the greenhouse gases they say we're all going to die from soon, any day. Lastly, there's also three different multiple-species conservation sub-area plans that have cost a total of over $3,700 so far to this city, when they don't even protect endangered hawks or eagles from toxic lithium-based wind turbines. But maybe this time, Rob, you should tell me that there are no wind turbines in the city of Santee. And maybe that will help justify this expensive land monopolizing county program that takes up land from human use for butterflies that just end up flying away. Because we all got to enjoy that lack of reasoning during the last meeting on April 12. The county's conservation plans have already taken more than 56,000 acres of land using the excuse of 85 different species. So I'm curious, if you council members are interested in trying to match that record. Here's some extra information to put that topic in even clearer perspective. I found this while researching the Elkhorn City Council's April 11th agenda. This is directly from the California Wildfire and Forest Resistance Action Plan, quote, "The state has invested $1.4 billion in California climate investments. Forest lands ownership in California, state lands, 3%. Private lands, 40%. Federal lands, 57%," end quote. You see, the federal government owns most of the land in California. They're way outside of their constitutionally limited area of DC. And that's why these programs need to be rejected. Thank you.
Motion to approve item number three.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I'm number 10.
Truth.
Okay. Last year, this city council approved a city of Santee investment policy with the city treasurer headed, heading the ship, navigating for a year, the choppy water investment into the San Diego treasurer's pool. The city of Santee's investment advisor, the PFM Asset Management LLC, decided that this was a good decision. PFM is actually owned by US Bank, who have their greedy little hands in every extremist organization they can keep propped up. So that's concerning to have one of US Bank's organizations as an advisor for the city. Since this item says that there are no plans to use the county pool, yet, that's good. But that's clearly not the real plan. Otherwise, the recommendation wouldn't have even been approved of. Uh, but then again, who knows what's coming down the federal funnel? Better than the county minions, right? So an investment with him, it could be very lucrative. But the million-dollar question is, do you council members want to dirty your hands with their dealings and decisions? I've heard many speakers from all over the county refer to the money they spend and the investments they make as blood money. Now, I'm going to take one second to stall because there, there could be more to this speech. I'm not sure. Uh, if you don't mind, but let me see. Hopefully, just a second here because there may be nothing else. Oh, yes, here it is. Got it. Things like an acceptable rate of return and liquidity needs are what a city requires when they can't keep a balanced budget. So my position is no to any potential county investments. Let's stay on course with smooth sailing, free of things like toxic sewer wastewater the county keeps trying to rebrand as drinking water. I wish I could, was here a little bit earlier so I could have listened to more of that presentation because I'm feeling that's what that was about. I see it better, to yield to safety as the primary objective and instead, liquidate the risk by simply cashing out of potentially risky investments. Diversify the security rather than gambling at the casino with the county. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to a non-agenda public comment. Do I have speaker slips?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers. Kristin Miller. Reminder, you have three minutes.
Hello. My name's Kristin Miller. Uh, I would like to share with you my experience working in the Santee School District. What I have to say offers reasoning for you and especially parents of school-aged children that may be listening as to what the root cause for schools failing in California is. I have been a public school teacher for over 10 years. And for the first time in those 10 years of teaching, I was forced by a principal in the Santee District to prepare and send an email describing my teaching methodology to the parents of my students. It reads like this, "Parents and Guardians. In my classroom, we are always striving to follow the classroom rules using accountability when the-" using accountability when the rules are broken. My methods as a public school educator of 10 years have always been to foster student accountability in the school setting, including acceptable behavior in a classroom and acceptable methods of interacting with others, peers, and adults. At its core, education starts with student accountability. It is not uncommon for children to complain, tattle, or try to stop accountability from continuing in order to continue with unacceptable behavior. It is best when all authority figures employ accountability with students for best success, not only in my classroom, but in the rest of their educational career. Unfortunately, I can only control what I do, and this may be best explained to your child as an alternative method to the methods they may have encountered or are currently encountering elsewhere. These norms and standards have been in place since I took over the teacher role. An example of this would be not responding to poor behavior, i.e. a student raising their hand for a non-emergency for 20 minutes straight during independent study time. Not responding to it is an example of holding poor behavior accountable. This can be applied to any and all behaviors that your child may be complaining about. I hope this serves to clarify your questions, concerns regarding my teaching methods, Ms. Miller. For sending this email, I was fired from that school. To be clear, my being here today and sharing this information with you is in no way in retaliation for being let go. As we are all aware, there are ample teaching positions across San Diego County and all districts available right now. This is most likely due to policies and procedures of enablement in school districts as ridiculous as the example I just gave. It may also shed light on why so many teaching positions are not being filled. I will, without a doubt, have another full-time teaching position for school next year. I was the second teacher fired in this same classroom by this same principal, which is extremely odd, especially since there was no follow-through on my request for an investigation of these circumstances, even though he is firing teachers without someone to fill their position and without just cause based on the opinions of sixth graders. That classroom has been without a full-time teacher for this entire school year. I am still awaiting anyone who listens to my email or has read it, including the entire school board of Santee School District or the administration of that school, or any adult, for that matter, to provide coherent, logical reasoning for why any teacher would be reprimanded, let alone fired, for anything that email entailed.
Is it lack of accountability the most important reason that these systems are failing?
Ma'am, your time is up. The next speaker I have is Truth. The next speaker I have is Truth.
All right. Mrs. Truth, and my battle outfit has a punk theme, because I am here to raise a riot of sorts. Somebody needs to shake up the sleepers. Like anywhere, on the streets of Santee, and you might get hit by a car. But those increased fatalities will serve well as justification for the city's active transportation plan in the future. No cars, because bicyclists and pedestrians are getting hit. The road must be safe for all modes of transportation. That's the state's line, isn't it? Will it really be a sustainable economy if people can't even make it to their job site because of an unrealistic scenario of everyone biking to work? And biking is not emission-free. Humans are always emitting carbon, even while riding bikes. How dare we breathe and give carbon to plants so they could create oxygen for us all to breathe? Now, since some hypocrites don't know what respect actually is, I'm going to presuppose another census-filled bullying attempt that wastes everyone's time, achieves nothing other than making me laugh while making themselves look like absolute fools, and doesn't build inclusivity or address any real issues like people who live in the community should do. So Laura, I don't know if John would have allowed those slanderous attacks to occur last meeting like you did, but you certainly did a better job at taking the helm than Nora Vargas has ever done. Congratulations. I do want to address a point about titles, though. I've never said Chairman Nathan Fletcher, just as I've never said Mr. Mayor John Minto. The reason for that is my identity. Oh, yes, I identify as... Hold on. There we go. American. A lot of people don't even know what that means. My agenda is freedom for all, very simple. And having read many of the American founders' writings, a belief of them, some of them that they expressed, is that in America, there should no longer be dignitary titles. I share that belief. We're all equals here in my eyes. And that's why use a first name with no title. If I wanted, I could be funny and call every person in government my servant, because that's their job, a public servant. But I have given nicknames to public servants before, and they've liked it. For example, East County Supervisor Joel Anderson's is Free Money Joel. Here's why.
Supervisor, I'm always eager to look for free money.
He believes that tax money just grows on trees. And I kid you not, he laughs every single time I play that clip. Of course, Joel's such a caring guy. He's having a coffee town hall right now during this meeting. He won't even drive by to say hi to us. But getting back to equals, I refer people to actually read the Constitution for the United States of America, including Article I, Section 9, that states, quote, "No title of nobility shall be granted by the United States," end quote. So that's where I stand. It's a cornerstone of Republican government. Learn it.
Final speaker I have is Linda Markell.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and staff. You know, I've been to a lot of meetings, and it's getting Jerry Springer with truthless that can't tell the truth and knows everything, knows what's best for us, doesn't live in the city of Santee, and inflames a lot of us old-timers in this city. We've paid our dues to this city. We want to see this city grow, and this is the strongest council and mayor that we've had to guide us into this hard times that we will be going into. Uh, things are going to get worse. We need to pull together as a community. And it's a shame that we left truthless, stand up here, and take three minutes out of every single thing you do. And if anyone out there believes that truthless reads anything, all the stuff she expects you guys to read, then you're kidding yourself, because there's no truth in truthless. And it takes away from us that live here in this city and care about our city when we have to have the cell phone music playing and all that. That's not what this is about. This is about pulling a community together and to get through these times, not about tearing down our council and our staff. And it's appalling, but it continues all the time. My last minute is going to be on the new library. I'm hoping that someday, before I get too old, that we will have that library, because in December, it'll be 43 years in December that we've waited for our state-of-the-art library. And this community needs it. And also, I went to Joel Anderson's thing tonight, and it was a great turnout. And it showed, it just made me so happy that our citizens, our citizens, not strangers coming into our city telling us what we need to do, but our citizens showed up to show their support, not only, you know, for our city, but for our barn and for the fact that nobody wants to see what county wanted to do. And I thank you all for putting a little stop to that, because that wasn't going to go down good with us citizens, us real citizens that stand up here and speak the truth, not people from other places that get their three minutes of fame and are truthless.
No further speakers.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item number 13, which is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan and authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application for community development block grant funds to the Department of Housing and Urban Development and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, all city council members. Item for you is approval of the Program Year 2023 CDBG Annual Action Plan. At the February 22nd public hearing, the city council selected program activities for the CDBG program funding during Program Year 2023, which runs from July 2023 through June of 2024, and directed staff to prepare a draft annual action plan and make it available for public review and comments. A draft annual action plan was prepared, and notice of the availability of the draft plan was published on March 24th and posted on the city's website. It was also available at the Counter Development Services. No public comments were received during the 30-day public comment period. The chart on this slide shows how the total amount of funding for Program Year 2023 was calculated. No funds were carried forward from Program Year 2021 in order to make more funding available for the ADA pedestrian ramp project currently underway. $3 in interest earned in Program Year 21 bring the total amount available for allocation to $321,999. This slide shows the six applications that were received for public service activities for the program year and the amounts approved for each applicant at the February 22nd public hearing. The final amount of Program Year 2023 public services allocations are based on the actual award amount of $321,996, which is about $31,000 or 10.7% more than staff's estimate. This slide shows two other categorical allocations that were adjusted based on the CDBG allocation from HUD. Note that the administration funding includes $20,500 for fair housing services provided by CSA San Diego County. So at this point, staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing, receive any public testimony, and adopt the resolution approving the Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan. This concludes my report. I'm available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have one speaker, sir.
I have one question.
Do you want to hear the speaker slip first?
Oh, we have a speaker? Oh, okay. Yes, please.
Yeah, let's call the speaker, please.
Hello again. It's no coincidence that on Monday, I just spoke to the San Diego City Council about their annual action plan. And now the city of Santee is submitting their annual action plan, too. It's all about getting those state and federal debt dollars. It's pay-to-play. It's like the mafia, though, who's ever expecting a favor for free. No such thing exists. There is always a price. And both the state and federal governments are looking for complete control of every city. That's why this item says that, quote, "Cities requesting an allocation of community development block grant funding must submit an annual action plan implementing their three- or five-year consolidated plans to the Housing Department by May 15th each year," end quote. See, that's a quote from the item. If you read it, you can find that for yourself. What's sad and funny at the same time is where the item says that no public comments were received during the 30-day public review and comment period. So much for the citizen participation plan. But if I had left a comment, that means I would have been the only person participating. And if we use county public health dictator, Wilma Wonka, I mean, Wooten's data-driven deception method, then that also would have meant that 100% of the people in the city of Santee would agree with my perspective. So hey, maybe next time, if I have time, I'll leave a comment. Then I can represent everybody. How about that? Scare some people. You guys want to know how much input the city of San Diego got for their consolidated plan? 344 people out of 3.2 million. That's 0.0001% of the population. They didn't fare too much better with civic engagement. But the Department of Housing and Urban Development is giving out almost $322,000 in federal debt dollars. Fun fact, a measly $3 was earned in interest, but that's officially the city's program income. I don't think the city of Santee should be partnered with or participating in the Regional Task Force on Homelessness. If only people understood the levels of corruption and political agendas that have been going on with that organization. I actually know somebody who worked for them. Just yesterday, their minions were calling for all kinds of totalitarian controls on landlords at the San Diego City Council. The Regional Task Force on Homelessness Boards of Directors includes people who work for the YMCA, Qualcomm, JP Morgan, United Way, and Kaiser Permanente, all bad companies and organizations that all deserve speeches to expose them. I'm glad, though, that the city of Santee does not receive any HUD, ESG, or HOPWA money. No added future debt to increase inflation. That's great. And overall, there's nothing wrong with using funds to feed people. But we don't need to create debts using people's hard-earned tax dollars to do that. So I oppose. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, actually, this is probably for the Finance Director. Are we reinvesting the $3, or?
Uh, yeah, it's part of the CDBG program next year.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Or, second?
Okay. So I had a motion by Councilmember Hall and a second by Councilmember McNellis. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 14, which is a public hearing for development review, DR 2022-6 and variance V 2022-4 for a four-story hotel consisting of 97 guest rooms at 381 Town Center Parkway in Town Center, Zone and Art and Entertainment Overlay District, and to consider a supplemental environmental checklist and addendum to previously adopted environmental impact reports at the State Clearinghouse, number 198501234 and 1999031096. Prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This project is a request for a development review permit and variance for a 97-room hotel with related amenities. The hotel's ultimate square footage is 58,700 square feet and would reach a height of 52 feet 3 inches. There would be 61 onsite parking stalls, and we've been told that the hotel provider will either be a Marriott or Hilton. So the site is located at the northern entrance to Trolley Square and currently functions as a parking lot. South of the project site... South of the project site is the, uh, some of the larger Trolley Square tenants, 24-Hour Fitness, DSW, and PetSmart. East is a continuation of the parking lot. West is the transit facility, including the trolley stop, and north is the undeveloped movie theater. The site is zoned Town Center, TC. It's also within the Art and Entertainment Overlay as adopted in 2019. The proposed use is listed as an allowable use in the TC land use matrix. So this is the project landscape plan. It's also a good visual for showing how the site will be laid out. Town Center Parkway to the north, again retailers to the south. The main entrance to the hotel is through a... There's my mouse. Through a portico on the south side. There's a pool area at the northeast corner, up here facing Town Center Parkway. The trees along Town Center Parkway that are existing will remain. One feature to note is that the existing parking area here will be an extension of a parkway with the development of the site. So this is a rendering that features the wide south elevation and a small glimpse of the east elevation over there to the right. The south elevation would face towards the adjacent buildings in Trolley Square. The entry portico is right here to the left side of the picture. The building has a very wide facade, but is broken up by stepped roof lines and a number of depth changes. The depth changes are a little more evident in a plan view. The main texture will be a smooth stucco finish and will utilize a muted color palette. The use in site design will also add to the vision of the Art and Entertainment District by providing a place for visitors to stay within the district and by redeveloping an existing parking lot with a building and outdoor pool area oriented toward Town Center Parkway that will offer an opportunity to enliven this area of Town Center as a part of the Art and Entertainment District. And this is just a night rendering that shows some of the lighting, landscape, and downlighting on the building. So the upcoming series of slides will go over the variance being requested as a part of this project. The image on this slide has an aerial that shows the existing site condition, and semi-transparent shape is the outline of the property. While the site meets the form and aesthetic recommendations in the Town Center specific plan and the general plan as designed, the project would require relaxing development standards for parking and setbacks. This image shows the proposed site plan overlaid on the current aerial. The parking standard for a hotel is one-to-one with the number of rooms plus two spaces for an owner and manager. So that would be 97 rooms, come to a total of 99 spaces. The design includes 61. The building setback here in the Town Center specific plan is... The building setback here in the Town Center specific plan is 50 feet from the back of the curb up there on Town Center Parkway. The closest the building will be is 38 feet. The variance proposal is supported by two property characteristics here, the odd shape of the lot, and the fact that there's a 50-foot setback along the longest property line. So this slide shows the 50-foot setback from the curb along Town Center Parkway projecting onto the site plan. While the 50-foot setback from the parkway is not unique to the site, the fact that the site's longest property line runs along the parkway is unique. This creates a higher ratio of undevelopable area on the property when compared to other properties in the vicinity, which are for the most part rectangular. The lot shape also results in a pinched area on the west side of the lot, and that is, well, I guess you guys can probably, there we go, over here. And it kind of creates a remainder space where you can't really put a building, you can't really put your parking, so another hindrance. The site's additionally encumbered by a Padre Dam easement represented by this blue-purple box. No structures are allowed to be placed on top of the easement, including pools. For these reasons, staff finds that the site does have exceptional circumstances that support granting the parking and setback variances being requested. The project was previously assessed by the EIR for the larger Trolley Square development as well as the supplemental environmental checklist for the Art and Entertainment District adoption in 2019. A new supplemental checklist was created for this project and found it consistent with the previous environmental documents. So staff recommends conducting and closing the public hearing, approving the supplemental environmental checklist and addendum for the project, and approving development review permit, DR 2022-6 and variance V 2022-4 per the attached resolution.
Thank you. Speaker slips.
We have two speakers. Truth?
So what does a four-story hotel with 97 guest rooms have to do with arts and entertainment? And how does a hotel operate without parking spaces? When at the March 8 meeting, the $1 million Arts and Entertainment District Item 8 said, quote, "The city of Santee's mobility element states that the city should create multimodal corridors that encourage walking, biking, and riding transit. All three projects have the goal of reducing the existing parking requirements within the Town Center area. A plan that encourages shared parking, the United Nations Agenda 21 Plan term Transit-Oriented Development, Time-Limited Parking, Curb Space Management, Unbundled Rented Parking, and Parking Enforcement Tickets," end quote. It's funny that this item even admits that this hotel project will require 99 spaces, and yet only 61 spaces will be provided. And maybe there could be parking on adjourned off-site properties. I have a feeling that based on the pro-U.S. Department of Transportation's Complete Streets bias and the anti-parking and car agenda I just referenced, I don't see that happening. Now a curb-to-building setback of 50 feet is required, but for some reason proposals and provisions are being ignored. The hotel staff won't even have anywhere to park, let alone hotel guests or Town Center shoppers in the future. Even the lot to be used for this future hotel currently functions as a parking lot for the Trolley Square Shopping Center. So that parking is going to be eliminated. That's a serious problem. Like I said, anyone can research the U.S. Department of Transportation's Complete Streets Plan, and you'll see that elimination of parking agenda. They're trying to implement every annoying obstacle possible to de-incentivize driving until the day they tax and charge us off the roads and infrastructure they've intentionally allowed to crumble all of these years. Long story short, this is a traffic nightmare disaster waiting to be built, and the XL Hotel Group is wasting over $712,000 to try to get this hotel built in a horrible location. Another fact in this item that was concerning is when it says that the proposed hotel would be 3 inches in height at the tallest point. How are they going to function with a miniature hotel that's only 3 inches tall? And who's going to use those four electric vehicle charging stations as part of the sustainable Santee plan? Nobody, just like the one outside these chambers, which sits vacant. But if you councilmembers really want this proposed hotel to fit into a so-called Arts Entertainment District, then where's the art in its design? A boring muted color palette definitely doesn't cut it. Why not some murals on the sides of the building? Or a funny flying pig sculpture at the top of the hotel? You know why? Because I have a feeling this project will end up just like the brewery and the movie theater, nonexistent, only when pigs fly. Sorry for being a little bit loony.
Next speaker is?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anthony Santo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Anthony Santo, and I am the director of construction for the owners of the Santee Trolley Square Shopping Center. When last we appeared before the council on December 14th, we reminded you that the development of the planned hotel must not interrupt operations of our shopping center. Our concern is even greater tonight, given XL's current application for a development review permit and variance, which is based on a new site plan for the hotel that reduces the number of required parking spaces for the hotel from 99 to 61, which is a 38% reduction. We urge the city council to deny XL's application. On page six of the staff report, the Santee city staff stated that, and I quote, "The applicant is also pursuing options to provide hotel guests with additional parking, including entering into a shared parking agreement with the Trolley Square Management Company so that the adjoining parking lot could be utilized by hotel guests." While we have been actively working on a reciprocal parking agreement with XL, as of yesterday, we think it is unlikely we will reach an agreement based on the proposed site plan, which eliminates the row of parking spaces on the hotel parcel we thought our customers would have access to. In addition, the site plan now orientates the main entrance of the hotel towards the shopping center parking lot that is used by the customers of 24-Hour Fitness. Those parking spaces are closer to the entrance of the hotel than those in the west parking lot for hotel guests to park in. These parking impacts may result in the closure of 24-Hour Fitness and will impact our ability to lease the 24-Hour Fitness space to future tenants. We have proposed other site options to the developer that we feel would more seamlessly integrate this development into the existing shopping center and allow for an equitable shared parking agreement. Unfortunately, all those options have been denied. If the city council approves this under-parking variance while knowing that no shared parking agreement is coming, hotel guests will unknowingly park in restricted spaces and force us to tow their cars. That situation doesn't benefit anyone because neither the hotel guests nor the retail customers have sufficient parking. As we have told the council on December 14th, all we want is to continue to have a functioning, integrated shopping center for everyone. XL's application for development review permit and variance should be denied. Thank you for your consideration.
I'm sorry. Who are you again? I apologize. I missed it.
Anthony Santo.
From?
I represent Santee Trolley Square Ownership.
Okay. So you're with Kimco?
Yes.
Thank you. Ron, you had, you had Namon?
Well, I'm in agreement with this. We, you know, the parking spaces, we've been arguing this one for quite a while, and I won't go into much detail on that, but I think we can work on the parking spaces. I think the ones that have not been helpful in this is Kimco, and I think we need to work on just going along with the project, getting it over. I would also just, we did check with MTS. We're not going to run into their problems with the buses, I assume.
Yeah, I'll, let me put the site plan back up here.
It didn't look like we would.
Yeah, so the entrance isn't being changed, all the developments sort of in the center and right-hand side. So yeah, the buses head over there to the west, so this won't impact there.
Yeah, I was pretty sure, dude. I thought we'd talked about it already. But yeah, as far as the parking goes, this has been a, we've had problems from day one. So I want to make sure that if we can work on it together, we should. At the same time, I think that Kimco's been unreasonable in this, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Other council members? Anything?
Yeah, I will agree with Councilmember Hall on that, since we've been working on this for four years. And Kimco still wants to be at the same spot, which is delaying a hotel that we need for Santee and we've needed for a long time, and that is our property. So hopefully, they can come to an agreement, but you know, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Hall, and I will make a, I'll second his motion. If you live in Santee, you know what it's, there's not a nice hotel in Santee right now. Sorry for the other hotels, but that's the reality. I know Carlton Oaks is working on upgrading theirs, but it doesn't exist yet. And we have Sportsplex USA that runs fabulous tournaments here, and the traveling teams have nowhere to stay, so they go to adjacent cities, and we're losing out on those customers. And I foresee that the businesses that operate in the Kimco property are, you know, going to benefit from people staying there greatly because they're going to eat there, shop there, and do their business in Santee. So I think it's a great project, and I'm glad it's finally moving forward.
Rob?
Yeah. My understanding was that this, that this parking lot was always designated for something like this, right? I mean, the space, the parking spaces that were being used by 24-Hour were actually on the parcel that was dedicated to the city of Santee, is it not?
Yes, the irrevocable offer of dedication parcel, which is the project site, did have an overlay of parking for 24-Hour Fitness. We have been working with Kimco to try to resolve those issues. At this point in time, that issue has not been fully resolved, but we do have plenty of space on the project site itself to be able to move forward with a compatible and coordinated project that does not hinder the operations of the shopping center, which is part of the original DDA on the shopping center site itself through the Vestar DDA. We, originally, there was a library and/or a public site that the city of Santee could move forward with or sell, utilize for any project that does not hinder the operations of the shopping center. And as you can tell, staff has worked really hard with Kimco, and we want to continue to do that, to try to make sure that the drive aisles that service the loading docks for PetSmart and DSW remain open so that that does not hinder their operations whatsoever. And there is still plenty of parking for 24-Hour Fitness.
May I elaborate a little bit? I think your original question, the answer is yes. This was always designed to be either a library or the city had the right to use it for a different use. And the language, the governing language is not hinder, or it's not, Kimco has oversight. It's just that use has to be consistent with the shopping center. Kimco is putting hotels in, or trying to put hotels in other shopping centers. Lots of shopping centers have hotels. There's clearly a consistency between those two. So, and with regard to the parking, the language of the original deal was always, they could either leave that whole site as raw dirt, or we allowed them, at their cost, to pave it with the obligation to remove that pavement if we asked them to. And so this site has always been controlled by the city, allowed, we've allowed them to use it while we decided what to do with it. And you've previously made a decision to use it for this use. You've gone through the process. You've gotten the property back. You've now entered into an agreement where you've sold the property for this particular use.
And I believe it was the previous owner, previous to Kimco, that assigned that parking to 24-Hour, not, well, knowing or not knowing that it actually wasn't theirs to assign, which is causing a lot of conflict now.
That's right. We never, we never agreed to that assignment, and...
Somebody messed up on that side that's now causing the conflict.
That's right.
That we need, that needs to be resolved.
Right.
On a property that we actually currently own that's in escrow.
We've actually sold it.
Okay, it hasn't been sold. They closed.
Correct. And, but you're...
Rights and remedies that we had as well.
Yep. You're absolutely right, though, that that's...
I want to make sure I was clear on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I guess, given the agreement, could they or us, I guess, demand that Kimco make it dirt?
We've made that demand, and we're in litigation related to that issue.
Okay, but here's my greatest concern. Make that dirt become surplus city-owned property if, unless, well, wouldn't we have to take that back?
We've already...
We've already sold it.
Yeah, we've already processed the property sale pursuant to the surplus land requirements. So that part is complete.
Okay.
And I'm sorry to give you a little, maybe too much information for this item, but I wanted to make sure the record was clear on what the actual language was, because there is this vision that the shopping center owner has some kind of right to stop this, and that's not true. The only obligation is that the use be consistent with the shopping center. And you've, you've already put them on notice, you've already made a decision to designate it for this use, and that sort of ship has sailed. So now the only question is the design issue.
Well, I think where I was going to go with this, because a lot of people don't know why we went ahead and did this, because if we didn't sell that property, it has to become listed as surplus government property. And if that was the case, then the state of California has the right to come in, do whatever they want with that property. And right now, what the state of California is doing is taking surplus property and putting affordable housing on it. And what we would probably get is something that is probably no parking at all, or very little parking, and would be several stories high because we can't control what they do, how big they do it, and how many rooms they make it. So that spot could end up with actually hundreds of rooms, and we don't want that to happen. We prefer to have a nice hotel there that will serve the community. You know, I've been here a long time. Rob's been here a second longest. And we've talked about this for an awful long time. You know, it's not that we don't want to work with Kimco or, you know, the property owners. The problem is that, you know, we have an obligation. And I can tell you, in the 20 years that I know that it's been there, I've never seen enough people park on that side of the building except to go to 24-Hour Fitness. Not that many people park on that side to walk into the Trolley Square. At least, that's been my experience. So, so it, so parking and having a hotel there, I don't understand how that can really have a negative impact. I know, but that's your concern, is a negative impact on shopping that goes on there. Also, though, once Kimco took that property over, though, I know that they, when we would have our street fair there for many years while the other company owned it, and people parked in their parking lots, they used their businesses and everything. Kimco took it over and said, anybody parks from the street fair, that wants to go to the street fair, we're going to tow their cars. And quite frankly, that always rubbed me the wrong way, because, you know, they're parking there, yeah, they're going to the street fair, but they're also going to be shopping. What a great way to get people into that complex to shop. And I never understood that philosophy. And I'm not saying that's your philosophy right now, but somebody in that company made that decision a long time ago. And today, I think it still probably goes on. I'm not 100% sure. If it doesn't, that means we worked something out, just like now. We'll work something out. And, you know, and...
That issue's been resolved, Mr. Mayor.
Well, okay. So this, too, will be resolved, no doubt. And, but I want us to go forward with the hotel. We should tell Padre Dam to move their pipes so that we can use all that property and not have an easement there, then we could put in more parking spaces. But I know that some adjacent property owners are very interested in providing parking. So we know that's going to happen. They're going to have it. And I travel a lot, and I go to hotels that are in, you know, shopping centers like this. And I can tell you right now, I love it because I don't have to walk or get in an Uber or something to go to the store or to go, you know, take in, well, some places have a movie theater, but, so, so I know the benefit of this. And, you know, I've been over at ICSC and talked to people, you know, management and brokering, brokering, and for Kimco. And, you know, they've always talked about wanting to get this done. So I just don't understand why it can't get done. So we're going to force that hand probably. So I think I have a motion on the, did you want to say anything?
That's all I'm going to say. We got a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Yep. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, though, for your comments. I do appreciate it. That takes us to item number 15, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving a hotel operating agreement with Excel Acquisitions LP, accepting the accompanying economic development subsidy report prepared pursuant to Government Code Section 53083 and finding that the action is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item does refer to the hotel project that was just previously approved at the immediate item right in front of this. The terms of the agreement are as follows, that the operator is required to operate the hotel as a flagged Hilton or Marriott product for a minimum of 10 years. In return, the city will provide an incentive payment from any revenue source available in an amount equal to 85% of the transient occupancy tax or TOT. The city will retain 15% of the TOT. The payments will be made on a quarterly basis for a 10-year period or until a cap of 2.5 million has been reached. The agreement is capped at 10 years or 2.5 million, whichever of those caps occurs first. Once one of the caps has been reached, the city will retain 100% of the TOT in perpetuity. In addition to the transient occupancy tax, the city will receive property tax on the approximate $17 million of property improvements and a limited amount of sales tax on an annual basis in an estimated amount of over $118,000 for year 1 through 10, and over $390,000 after that. Additionally, the city will receive over $710,000 in development impact fees, and the project is estimated to produce approximately 20 new jobs and serve as a catalyst for development of the new arts and entertainment district. Approval of this agreement would authorize myself as a city manager to execute the agreement upon the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the hotel. Our staff recommendation is that council adopt the resolution approving the operating agreement with Excel Acquisitions LP and accept the accompanying economic development subsidy report, finding that the action is not subject to CEQA.
Speaker slip, please.
Truth. So this item says that this future hotel, which apparently, maybe it will have enough parking for guests or staff, and it will take away, but it will take away more parking from shoppers at the town center, will either be a Marriott, Town Place Suites, or a Hilton Home to Suites, and will be there for at least 10 years. I do agree about a nice hotel because I went to the Marriott Courtyard in El Cajon. It was very nice. I was surprised. So the transit occupancy taxes will be collected with and from the Excel Hotel Group. I wonder if that's the main motivating factor for approval of this hotel. I mean, who wants to, to book a room with a view of the back of a Target building? It's ridiculous to me. This item says each calendar quarter, there's up to 2.5 million in transient occupancy tax revenue to be collected and shared by both the city and Excel. The first year of the hotel will bring both the city, oh, sorry, will bring $43,000 in porky pig bacon, and then eventually by year 11, over $344,000. Then finally, years 11 to 15 would allegedly reach over 1.7 million in greedy, pigish bacon. Not only that revenue will be generated, but the hotel will have an assessed value of about $17.3 million. So property taxes to be scooped up for the city's use will reach a cumulative amount of $225,000 in the first five years alone. And the city will get over $712,000 in development impact fees, at almost $1 million in more motivating money. When business and government work together, what's referred to these days as public-private partnerships. The real term to describe that type of entanglement is fascism. Private business embed with public government. It always creates conflicts of interest, what I'd call a different type of green eyes. This item also says that the hotel shall be open and fully operational within 30 days of notice. That's important to note so everyone can know when the construction will begin, because I don't predict a no vote. I think actually the last item kind of confirmed that. But yes, a hotel would create jobs, 20 jobs. But if people struggle to even find a place to park, how will they get to that new job? It's inevitable that most hires won't be from the city of Santee, and probably no one is going to take the trolley to work at this hotel, as much as you may like that. And is there really a demand for tourism in Santee like the item suggests? Let's be real. This future hotel is just going to have those tournaments you were talking about. I don't want it to be a Potemkin Hotel. That's what I'm saying. Overall, I'm not against any, any new hotel, especially if it's a nice one. That's great. Although I don't, personally, I don't see a demand for one either. But if a developer wants to build one, I'm 100% against this location that will do nothing but create traffic and take up all of the parking in the Town Center Plaza. But if you have a solution, John, then that's good. Thank you.
Council members?
Most to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Have motion approved. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Takes us to item number 16, which is a community risk assessment and long-range master plan staff updates, finding the action is not, is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, city staff. This item is an update on a presentation that was given by AP Triton, our consulting firm, last month. Appreciate you giving me a full month to kind of wrap my arms around the report and work with city staff to provide an update, work with my, my staff to provide an update, and also some recommendations for moving forward. As stated, the community risk assessment long-term master plan was received on March 22, 2023. And I do need to take a moment to thank the number of departments that engaged in helping us gather this information. Literally every department in the city of Santee assisted with providing information for us to give to our consulting firm so they can come up with this comprehensive 240-plus-page report. And I, I think that most of what was presented was not a surprise to us. We've been talking about it for quite some time, but it, but it was nice to see a professional firm that specializes in this produce these 27 recommendations. Now, if you look at the report, there's actually 26 numeric recommendations, but for some reason, I just caught this, there's two 18s, so there actually is 27 recommendations. I think I hit a button accidentally. The recommendations fall into kind of these six big buckets. 10 of them have to do with our EMS system, nine have to do with programs and planning, one apparatus, three training, three staffing, and three having to do with infrastructure. Starting with our EMS system, we have a busy EMS system. We've talked about this at previous council meetings and council has taken action to approve putting an additional unit in service. The catalyst for us to be able to move forward with addressing some of our deficiencies in our EMS delivery system was the formation of the Santee Lakeside Emergency Services Authority. Some of the items that we've already implemented is an EMT program in conjunction with Lakeside. Lakeside is working on a 12-hour EMT unit as well as Santee. Both of us plan on having an apparatus wheels rolling prior to July 1. We hope to, to actually get our units out well ahead of that timeline, but that was always our target timeline, considering that the JPA was formed on January 1 of 2023. We have since hired a nurse coordinator to assist with training our personnel, QA oversight, and also to assist with the management of this EMT program and the training of the personnel as we work through the onboarding process. One of the items that was identified was greater collaboration with the county medical director. And we've gone above and beyond that by working with our central zone agencies to hire our own medical director for the central zone that will be housed in our Heartland Communications Center. So we will have direct access and a lot more autonomy moving forward. And what these things represent, our EMT program, our nurse coordinator, our medical director, these are not finish line events. These are starting points. And we know that we've had a system that needed to be addressed for years. We've talked about it with our old CSA 69 meetings and keeping the council appraised. And now we have the ability to do some things. And if you were to look at our program today versus six months, 12 months from now, it's probably going to look different. We're going to continue to evolve and we have that ability to do that now. So we have been able to address some of these pretty significant issues, the most pressing being how busy our medic units are. We have busy, busy paramedic units, and we, we've talked about this at previous meetings. We're going to do everything in our power to address that moving forward to alleviate, again, this extreme disproportionate call volume that our units are seeing compared to other units. Moving on to programs and planning, there was quite a few items that were, we consider programmatic things that we can handle department-wide. The ones that have an asterisk by them are ones that we have not yet started to, to address, but we, we will. It's only been a month since receiving the report, but the ones without the asterisks are ones that we've already started to move forward on. A purpose and ethos statement that we just developed last week in a two-day workshop using an outside consulting firm is trying to get a modern purpose statement, also known as a mission statement, that truly represents the men and women of the Santee Fire Department and what we are here for. It was a great event, well-attended by our personnel, and we were able to really lay the foundation for strategic plan moving forward and really the foundation for our department culture moving forward, which is, which is equally important to a strategic plan. You could see the values that were born out of that, family, empathy, trust, adaptability, and grit. Those represent our department. And some of the men and women sitting in the audience helped to develop this and, and we're pretty excited about it moving forward. WUWE mitigation, we submitted for a $7.2 million grant that we are very, very confident that we are going to get approved. It's just a matter of waiting for FEMA to give our final approval. But we're addressing some of our WUWE vulnerabilities through that grant. And, and again, hopefully we get the good news really soon. Working towards improving our data inputs, we've already started to address, oh, sorry, Rob.
Can you tell everybody what WUWE stands for?
I apologize. I started talking really quickly. WUWE stands for Wild and Urban Interface. This is the portions of the city that have a lot of vegetation and they butt up against where our built environment is, where we live. And so one of our big vulnerabilities in the city is our river corridor, where we have a significant amount of fires, close to 100 a year. And we're doing everything in our power through some other avenues as well, our homeless working group. But also, this is another one of those lanes that we're going to try to attack this issue with, is trying to decrease our, our flammable fuels, decrease our actual litter and our trash, and also increase our dispensable space. Data inputs, reviewing incident data, these are, these are items, these are on me. These are things that we need to do better as, as a department, and we will moving forward. And I mentioned the strategic plan, the pub ed data collection, the fire hygiene inspections. We'll address these. Give us a little bit of time, but we will address them. Apparatus was another significant one. The recommendation from AP Triton was to replace Engine 5 and Engine 205. And really, it had to do with some major deficiencies in our reserve fleet. Again, we are 24/7, 365 department. We put a lot of miles on our apparatus every single year. And so there is some downtime for these, our frontline apparatus being able to be in service. And as of right now, one of our reserve apparatus is a 1996 engine that is approaching 30 years old. That's well beyond its serviceable life. So by replacing Engine 5 and 205, we're going to be able to move those to reserve status and be able to have, again, a really well-oiled machine for every single day of the year. We've already addressed replacing Engine 5. That was memorialized in last year's budget, 2223. Unfortunately, it takes 18 to 24 months to receive these apparatus. Now, we're still seeing some issues from the production delays from COVID. We have placed in our budget for this year the replacement of Engine 205. These are big-ticket items, though. And we'll get, when I get to the end, I'll talk about some of the price tags on these. And we are going to move forward with surplusing Vehicle 83, which is that 1996 engine that, again, just does not meet modern safety standards for responding with lights and sirens. Training. The report did identify a few training deficiencies that we own, we're going to address, one of which was a recommendation to add a administrative training officer. We landed on this being a battalion chief. This is going to be presented in this year's budget. And we believe that this individual, working on a 40-hour schedule as opposed to a shift schedule, is going to be able to assist us in, in really increasing our oversight of our training. If you remember, we saw those big bar graphs and some of them really high, some of them were really low. I will say this, our, our men and women train their tails off. And if they would have put a line that shows what the minimum number is, you would see that a vast majority of our personnel far exceed what the minimum standard is. With that being said, we need to do a better job of making sure that we're filling all these buckets of training and making sure that our personnel are not just getting a bunch of EMS training, but also some advanced firefighter training. And so we believe that some administrative persons, such as a battalion chief, will be able to greatly assist us with that. We have very recently identified an additional training site in collaboration with PSD and CSD support to be able to have a location where we could train in this city, put hose on the ground, flow water, and do some of those skill sets, such as throwing ladders. And again, I've already mentioned deploying hose. And we, we have identified that at our ops yard. There is a area at the ops yard that they said that we could utilize. And what that has done for us is allowed us to train here in the city instead of going over to El Cajon and utilizing our joint training facility for the central zones, but being 15 minutes plus away from really where the epicenter of our calls are. So we've, we've worked to address this. We have more work to do. But these are a couple of things that we have, we're actively working on, in addition to really trying to change our philosophy as far as being really operationally focused on enhancing our firefighter skill set. Staffing. This is no surprise to anyone up here in the council. We've talked about this many times, station staffing. In 2001, when I was hired 22 years ago, we had 18 FTEs on a daily basis for the fire department, 18. Today, 2023, we have 17. This is, again, no surprise to anybody that they were going to identify a need to increase our staffing. We haven't done it since 2000s, and it is just a glaring vulnerability and an area that we need to address. We have since submitted for a SAFER grant, which would, which would provide funding for three years for six firefighters. In addition, we have put in for six firefighters, squad staffing, and an administrative battalion chief in this year's budget. Now, the SAFER grant and the squad staffing are one and the same. Reason for putting this into this year's budget is in case we're not successful in the SAFER grant, which, again, I have no idea if we're going to be successful, trying to have a backup plan. So Plan A, successful in the SAFER grant. Plan B, memorializing this through staffing, or, sorry, through our budget. And this has to do with the recommendation from AP Triton saying that to get up to national or Western standards for staffing per 1,000 personnel, that we should add nine to 12 firefighters. We are proposing six, and that will bring us up to this 1.0. Now, again, honestly, I think that the, the numbers are not as important as what I already stated, is no additional staffing since the 2000s, since the 2000s started. So in a perfect world, I'd love to have 12 firefighters plus. And we move forward expeditiously with, with making that change. But I don't have any more beds. I don't have any more base. We, it is what it is. We, we have some structural deficiencies within our department. And I'm going to move on to infrastructure, which is really going to probably be the bulk of this presentation. Station 4, per the AP Triton report, has met or exceeded its serviceable life. It's over 50 years old. If you have eyeballs, you could walk through Station 4 and realize that it's dilapidated and needs to be repaired. dilapidated and needs to be replaced. We've been talking about it for quite some time. Again, no surprise to the council, but, uh, AP Triton, this was one of their top recommendations was the immediate replacement of fire station four. They also identified our shop as being woefully inadequate for servicing an entire city fleet. This shop initially was not designed to be a city shop. It is a butler building with no plumbing, scabbed in electricity, and it gets the job done. It gets the job done because of the amazing work of our, of our shop personnel. Uh, but I don't think a single person in this room would want to work in the conditions that those gentlemen work in on a daily basis. And, and we need to do right by them at some point and address, again, this, this major deficiency, again, I identified by AP Triton. This is where we are. Again, only so much we could do with two stations. I had lunch recently with a retired fire chief who was hired in nineteen seventy-seven and we were talking about stations and staffing. When he got hired in nineteen seventy-seven, there was two fire stations in the city of Santee. We currently have in twenty twenty-three, two fire stations in the city of Santee. So again, I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to realize that we, we, we might have been a little deficient. I own it as the fire chief, we own it as the fire department, that we should have addressed this issue probably decades ago and at least started the planning process. But there's only so much we could do as far as response times out of these two stations. And this is where we are with our four-minute industry standard response times. And again, this is the goal, but we have some major deficiencies to our southwest and our north. And you could see again by these big blobs, which I, I gotta thank Matt Hermeyer for helping me with a bunch of these, these graphics, uh, the GIS stuff. Um, and you'll see some later on that represent what we could be, what we should aspire to be. We know where our incidents are. Again, the AP Triton report reinforced information that was already presented at CSA meetings, SLMSA meetings, JPA meetings. We, the density, the epicenter of our calls is really in the middle of our city around the Trolley Square area. Um, I bring that to your attention because if you look at the image to your right, the one in green, you see that the, the redder, the blob, that's the more, that's the higher density of calls. And what that shows is that fire station four is in a really, really good location for the high density of our calls.
These are, these are just fire, right?
These, on this, this is all calls. These are all calls. All incidents, emergency medical, fire, traffic collisions, you name it, this is all of them. And it's just a busy area. It's where obviously Trolley Square is, Costco. Um, there's a lot of people that come into our city on a daily basis and it generates a lot of calls. So our order of operations moving forward, how do we address these issues? We, we know it took us twenty-plus years to get here. And there is no expectation from any of us here or in the crowd, you see a lot of firefighters, for us to solve this problem overnight. I think we're all realistic and it's going to take a little bit of time, but we have to be strategic and it is time for some strategic doing versus strategic planning. We've been talking and planning for years and years and years. And now we're in what we would like to call the doing phase. Third fire station and shop design. This is a first domino that we believe needs to fall. We have money allocated in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget that is for a fire station four rebuild. It was the initial seed money that was actually identified a couple fiscal years ago. That is sitting there right now. And our desire is to reallocate that money towards the third fire station that would be, I'll, I'll talk about the location, and a shop design. Then move on to building the shop and the fire station. Then move on to station four design, station four build, a fourth fire station and design and a fourth fire station build. Where would that third fire station be? This is the operations yard. And what these show are true dimensions of what the footprint would be for a couple things. Uh, over here, this would be the shop. This would be very similar to what Padre Dam utilizes for servicing their entire fleet. And over here would be a two-story fire station with three bays. And the beauty of this location is we own this land. And it's already has some significant improvements as far as some of the undergrounding that will facilitate probably some, I shouldn't say probably, will facilitate some significant cost savings versus if we were to just acquire a piece of land and start from scratch. What you see over there, the yellow rectangle, it represents another project that is necessary on the, at the ops yard, which is a decanting station. And so what this illustrates is that we have the space to fit all of these items in there. We're not proposing this in a vacuum. We've been talking to CSD and PSD and making sure that we're not going to jam them up and they're still going to maintain their operations. And, and I, and I do believe that we have some pretty significant support. Sam's shaking his head, so that's all I need, is, uh, we do have some pretty significant support throughout the city. What this will look like is this is the frontage of the operations yard and you're going to be wowed by my Photoshop skills right now. This is the kind of concept, I, I, I should have solicited, I feel bad that I went after Doug because his renderings were so nice and I was like, man, I should ask Doug to help me out with this.
Chief, that is in the city of Carlsbad, I'll tell you right now.
Dustin, don't ruin it for me. I was on a roll. Uh, but it, it is in the city of Carlsbad. It's there, it's Carlsbad's brand new station two. But what it does show is, and this is why I was showing the picture from the overview before, is that's a ten thousand square foot, two-story building with three bays. And that plot of land that I showed you will accommodate this fire station. Shop relocation and construction. We want to take our shop from this structure to something more modern that is more similar to Padre Dam's facility. Three bays as opposed to four, but they're deeper, they're much taller. It will allow our apparatus to actually be worked on inside, tilt the cabs, and it would also provide, again, a, a modern, uh, structure that would meet the needs of our mechanics and, and they would be working in, in much more tolerable conditions. Fire station four, I'd, I'd already mentioned, this is a prime lot and it will be very challenging to find something that has what fire station four's lot has to offer. It's one point three acres. Uh, currently, if you look at the existing footprint, yup, gotta back up. If you look at the existing footprint for fire station four and you look at the proposed footprint of fire station four, you see that we have some, we have some opportunity to really expand the size of that structure to accommodate all of our needs. If you go to fire station four right now, you would see it's packed full of equipment, backed up, three deep, and a brand new station would be more bays, more bunk rooms to allow us the capacity to add more units such as a squad or a BLS rig that is twenty-four hours and, uh, additional units. As stated before, we don't have that luxury to add people and apparatus to station four right now, which we all want to do. We have to divide bunk rooms that are already existing or have people share bunk rooms. And we would have to have one of our apparatus just simply respond out of the back somewhere, actually not responding out of the front of the building. So we know we have some work to do. The vision is to go from this to something more modern, two-story structure, four bays, able to accommodate ten-plus people on a daily basis. It is ambitious, but this is what you see all over the county of San Diego and where the vision is building a structure that is going to last the next fifty-plus years. That's how long we expect to get out of our fire stations. A fourth fire station. Some preliminary discussions about where that fourth fire station would be. Now, there are probably better locations than the city hall. In a perfect world, I could put a pin on a map in a couple places and say, this is where we would have the best response times. But what is feasible and what is likely to be for us to succeed in, in moving forward versus what is perfect are not always the same. And so this structure actually provides some pretty significant improvement and coverage to the northern portion of our city. And if things go as planned and our community center is built, building eight will essentially be vacant. And again, as mentioned before, we own the land. So the vision would be to go from, again, our building eight as it currently exists to something more modern. And this would be the proposed, proposal would be a two-bay fire station at the northern portion of our city. This one I just pulled off the web, I'll be honest with you, I'm not really sure. Um, again, I, I know now that I need to get planning involved in my next presentation. I want to again, highlight where our incidents are. We know where they are. The center of our city is where the highest volume of our calls are. And this is what we have right now. But this is some of the areas that we're trying to address. And this is the vision with two additional fire stations. And as you can see, a fire station in the northern portion of our city has a significant impact on improving our response times to that entire area. It's pretty good. It's real, it's actually really good. Now, the question might be looking at the ops yard. In a perfect world, Justin, would you prefer to have a unit that's moved or a station that's moved a little bit more to the west so that I can stretch that blob out and hit the most western portion of our cities? Yeah. If we own some land right now and there is some utilities and stuff that were, that would make it feasible to move forward, yes. But those lots are few and far between. We're talking major delays in moving forward and improving our response time, looking to acquire that. And this is where I just gotta caution us about letting perfect be the enemy of good. This is tremendously better than our current model. And the ops yard location offers something that is much needed for us. It offers some redundancy or some overlap in our ability to respond to the middle of our city. So again, if you think back to where those big blobs were or where our density of calls are, where are those two blobs overlap here, fire station four and the ops yard? That is where most of our calls are. And so engine four, medic four being as busy as they are, extremely busy units, now when they're on a call, I have some redundancy, I have some, a fallback, a safety net to be able to also respond to the area in the middle of our city, but improved response times to the southwest. This is an overlay of the council district, which I, I know that you're all aware of your districts. Order of operations, I need to update this order of operations because we did say that we do have the funding right now to move forward with a third station and shop design. But the major impediment for this, this is no surprise to anybody, is securing a funding source. These dominos do not fall without securing a funding source, a realistic funding source moving forward. Then we would move on to the other bullet points as previously stated. And I want to quantify what our need is. I mentioned that we are working and we will continue to work tirelessly to address these twenty-seven items that were presented by AP Triton. But I need help from council to address a lot of these. There is no improvement without addressing this giant elephant in the room. A third fire station, fourteen million dollars, a new shop five point five, station four rebuild eighteen, fourth fire station fourteen, engine two oh five, a million dollars. I've put a lot of time talking to subject matter experts all around the county, visiting brand new stations, talking to fire chiefs, talking to people that have actually constructed the construction companies for these structures. The unfortunate reality is that building a fire station is extremely expensive. It's expensive. And these are going to be fifty-plus year structures. They're going to accommodate, uh, take a beating on a daily basis from the men and women that are going to be inside the structures. And they have to conform to critical facility standards. It's not the same as building a house. And you have to throw things in there like large generators, reinforced masonry or making sure that they are, they're, they're equipped to handle an earthquake. Point being, these things cost a lot of money. They cost a lot of money and we realize that this is a, an eye-popping number. I get it. It's an eye-popping number. And this is where I get to bow out. This was the easy part and I'm going to hand it over to our finance director, Heather, to talk about the hard part.
You already found the money?
No, still looking though. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and City Council members. Um, so yeah, great vision, great speech and, um, now the fun or not so fun part comes. Anyways, uh, so the basic financial assumptions here, um, actually let me back up. I'm here to present some options that could support the building of the fire facilities. Um, the basic financial assumptions that, that were used, um, we're looking at financing about fifty-one point five million dollars. This is a million dollars less than the previous slide. We took out, out the, um, million-dollar fire engine because that's financed using a different methodology. The term of the financing is thirty years. Interest rates, um, are based on current market and current market plus a hundred basis points. There's a spread here to account for certain bond instruments, um, which are considered to have, I'm sorry, considered to be more secure so they'll have a lower interest rate. With, with these calculations and using fifty-one point five million as the borrowing amount, the annual debt service estimate is approximately four point one million to four point five million per year. And that's the, the, the whole fifty-one point five. So I will be presenting four options and option one is a voter-approved sales tax initiative. Um, back in two thousand, the city's, uh, sales tax consultant, HDL, did a, um, analysis on what the city could generate with a, with a half-cent sales tax add-on. Um, and back in two thousand, they estimated the city would, would be able to collect about five point one million dollars annually. Um, of course, this is twenty-three years old. Um, I'm, you know, the, the number has got, you know, is more than this now. Um, but you can see this, this scenario would get it done and it would cover the debt service, service payments, um, through the years. For a city, for a add-on sales tax initiative, uh, there would need to be a supermajority voter approval. Back in November twenty twenty-two, in the California election, there was eighty-two percent, there was an eighty-two percent passing rate for city general to sales tax measures. The second, the second option is a voter-approved bond issuance or a general obligation bond. This debt is paid through a supplemental ad valorem tax, um, assessed on each property. With this, there are potential inequities based on assessed home values. You know, if you've got someone who's just purchased a home, their assessment's going, their assessed value is going to be a lot higher than somebody maybe who's been living in their home for ten or twenty years and, and hasn't reassessed their value. So those with the higher assessment will pay, will pay more. Um, this type of, this type of bar or this type of bond issuance, um, needs a supermajority, two-thirds of voters to approve. The third option is the fire benefit fee, which we've talked about before. We currently generate about one point one million dollars annually. Uh, our, our fees are, are basically flat at this point with forty-two dollars per residential unit and four ninety-two for industrial and commercial units. If we increase, um, if we increase our current fees by a hundred and thirty-one percent, which is the change in CPI from, since the maximum, since the maximum rate was reached in nineteen ninety-three, the city would receive about one point four million in additional revenue. This, any, any changes to the fire benefit fee would need a supermajority, um, of voter The last op, the last option, um, recognize the current economic development as, as a funding source. The city will always continue to have revenue growth, uh, sales tax, property tax and other revenues. Um, it's beneficial, very beneficial for the city to have, um, large sales tax generated from things like, you know, um, auto dealerships, um, and things like that. Property tax, any large new developments or, or, um, large improvements are, are, help our property tax base. Um, but they're not always, they, they wouldn't be a reliable and guaranteed revenue stream for debt service payments. Um, they're just not reliable and, um, they're not dedicated enough to ensure payment. Cannabis, at this point, we're unsure about the amount of revenue to be generated. Most likely it would not be enough for debt service. And, um, there are grants, unfortunately. And there are grants, unfortunately, it's difficult to find grants large enough to support a fire station. Something like this would also involve a matching component. Oftentimes, we can, they can help with other non-construction costs. Send it back to Justin.
That concludes our report. So at this point, staff is seeking input and direction from councils and/or any Q and A that you would like us to address.
Let's hear the speaker slips.
Truth? Okay, hello. One problem I noticed with this item. Number one, it references a city council meeting on April 13th, but there was no meeting that day. It was actually April 12th, the previous day. Let's see. And number two, Justin. See, probably no one said your last name correctly. That's how you say it. Seriously, I would have liked to see an informational attachment provided, not just the live presentation, but if you or the rest of the firefighters didn't have time with all the calls, that's very understandable. Let's see. Oh, somebody needs to get on Lantern Crest for taking up all the EMS call time and energy efforts. That's part of the problem. I do remember from March 22nd, this AP Triton Community Risk Assessment Long Range Master Plan was a 229-page book that I had to skim. And it offered a ridiculous amount of 26 recommendations. And now it's 27. We're really going off the rails here. There was all kinds of information about the city of Santee from population, demographics, safety, budget, and more. And I remember very well that Rob, you had such a confused face when I started reading figures from that attachment that said that the city council gets over $476,000. And so you looked at John like, where is this coming from? But that's because you didn't read that 229-page attachment. I understand, only crazy people like me read boring budgets while others are on TikTok or something, I don't know. But maybe you should have at least skimmed it since you voted on it. It is your job, public servant, remember? For the record, I can tell you all that the city of Oklahoma tried the exact same half-cent sales tax and it failed miserably with the voters. And so the last meeting I was at, they were discussing how they could convince people of the benefits of that tax. And it was very interesting, if I can remember correctly, they were, they did a survey and everybody was in favor because it went to homelessness, it went to fire, safety, something else too. And then when they did the vote, it just completely bombed. I don't know why that is, but they were trying to figure out. To me, the elections are not to be trusted. It's already been proven. But if you guys are going to try that half-cent sales tax, it's probably going to go the same direction if I had to take a wild guess. But the positive, I'll say, I do remember that from one of the last meetings, that the firefighters finally got some new gear to do their job safely. 15 pants and 14 jackets specifically, and cookies, they got cookies. They also have grit. And with the new fire trucks, hopefully more firefighters and a new building or two, they'll be able to put that grit to safe use. Get it built so we can get closer to fire-safe, a fire-safe finish land. What? Wait a minute, my joke fell on. Finish line, that's what I meant, a fire-safe finish line. Thank you.
No further speakers. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dustin.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Gerhart. I'm the President of the Santee Firefighters Association. And I'm happy to hear that we're talking about increasing emergency services for the city of Santee. Last month, I spoke at the council meeting where I addressed the need to increase services for our fire department that has remained stagnant for over 20 years. And when the AP Triton report was presented to council, we couldn't help but notice glaring gaps in coverage within our city. And when I see these gaps, I think about the citizens that we were sworn to serve and how we are letting them down. I'm not saying this to be misleading. I'm only following the science and data that has been well-known since it was ingrained in my brain when I was an EMT student back in 2002. We were always taught that life is a fragile thing. And when something catastrophic happens to a person, time is tissue. Look at everything that we do. With trauma patients, we have less than an hour to get them treated and transported to a trauma center. With stroke patients, we need to pinpoint the exact time the onset of symptoms began. And lastly, when someone goes into cardiac arrest, we have four to six minutes before brain damage occurs. And after 10 minutes, death is expected. So when I look at the map showing coverage gaps in our city and I put the science and the data together, I can't help but feel like our firefighters and our citizens are set up for failure when we have eight-minute response times. We know that the proposed plan isn't perfect, but we support the increased services to better serve our city as soon as possible. We want to hear more success stories like the CPR save that we are promoting on Santee TV, where our crews were on scene within two minutes. Like I said, time is tissue. I applaud the courage that Merrimento expressed last month. He stated he would support a tax measure to address the needs of public safety. And we hope that you do what is right to properly protect our citizens by supporting a tax measure to increase emergency services. Thank you.
Counsel. Comments?
I'll go first. So as far as, we're all in agreement. We've talked about this, we've already talked about this. We talked about this, our strategic planning meeting, we talked about it several times. We had individual, or at least a couple of us at a time, meetings to discuss the potential options available. I think, I don't think there's a member up here that doesn't want to see better coverage. And of course, that will, I think that will completely be fulfilled throughout that, or through most of the northern part at least. God willing, if there's ever going to be a need to ranch someday, that fat station up there will also cover that last little bit over above the lakes. So that would help tremendously as well. Until then, we, I mean, we just can't wait till then for anything. I have always been probably the loudest opponent of any sales tax measure increases because I just, I just believe in better spending. That being said, that was in the days where we actually had redevelopment funds, where we were able to use those types of funds to do this exact thing. And we got a lot more of our property tax revenue that was now, that was stolen by the state of California from us. We had a fair amount of money set aside in that when that was all stolen from us literally almost overnight, right, a year after I got elected. So we've had, we've had to find very creative ways to finance everything ever since then. And it's, and at the, while at the same time, the state of California continues to add more unfunded mandates to all the cities and municipalities around us. It's, it's not fair, but that's, life never is. Our job is to figure it out and make the best decisions that we can for the betterment of our community. The only way that I could ever even potentially get my brain wrapped around a, a sales tax increase would be to have a sunset clause on it, that once this was funded to a specific amount, that it goes away, period. It doesn't, it doesn't get renewed, no option to renew. It literally goes away, period. And then you go back to a vote of the population if you want to do anything like that again. Oftentimes, what ends up happening is we do a sales tax increase to finance something that's easy to pitch to the public, like public safety or school. Those funds end up getting used for that, but then they take away other funds that we were using for something else, for pet projects. That's the main reason I've opposed something like that for so long. I believe, in this moment at least, with the council that's up here, that we haven't had anybody that really had any pet projects that weren't for the betterment of the community as a whole. And the only one that maybe there was, was Trotter's, or Councilmember Trotter's Memorial Bridge, but he put his money where his mouth was and he funded it himself to a large extent. So you can't complain about that one. So did the mayor, yes, thank, yes. Actually, they both put a lot of money and energy into that. This is, that's one way. I also, and I've been saying it probably ever since I got up here and it's just never freaking been done. But we've got it, we've got to do something with the fire benefit fee. It's, that's just, it's so silly that we're still utilizing a number that was developed in 1980 and maxed out in 93 or 96, was it?
93.
93? Yeah, 93. It's just, it's absurd. What hasn't gone up in cost since 1993? There's nothing. Everything has. And that's over a million dollars a year, $1.4 million a year. If we'd have just gone with CPI, like most factors utilize, or most agencies utilize that factor, that's right there is money that could have been put away and continually put away to have funded this. So this won't be the last project that we're going to need for fire benefits. This won't be the last thing we're going to need to do. We're going to need to buy more fire trucks in the future. We're going to need to hire more guys and gals in the streets. So we have to do them both. The problem is, I think it would be very difficult to get both of those passed in a voter, for voter approval in the same, in the same election year. It's just you're, you're asking for too much, even though one should have been done over 30 years ago. But it wasn't. So it brings us to, you know, where we are today. So which one do we do first? Obviously, I guess you'd have to do the one that's going to bring the most revenue in the fastest. But I don't see any other way to get there from here with the other options under option four. Or, or maybe, I mean, maybe a bond issuance, but I think that's a little, I think that's an even riskier thing. Although, I don't know, I would maybe need Heather's assistance on that. It's not just that, it's, you know, what's, what's the, what would be the overall lowest cost to the general population? And then you do go back to the disparity between someone that's in, you know, West End versus someone that's in an apartment there, you know, they're getting the same public safety services, but they're paying a disproportionate difference in the cost of those public, those safety services. So I, that just doesn't seem equitable to me. God, I can't even believe it's come out of my ding mouth. It tastes nasty, I'm not going to lie. But half, the half-cent taxes with a sunset clause would probably be the only thing that I can see that would really get us from here to there in a timely, in a reasonable manner. If you guys can come up with something else, please, God, let me hear it.
You know what, Rob, the sales tax is something that is very equitable because it's not just the people that in the, that live in the city of Santee, but it's those 1.2 million nearly people that come here and recreate throughout the year. And they would be helping to provide public safety since they do use public safety when they're here.
Without a doubt. I mean, sometimes things happen when you're shopping.
Yep.
Even if you don't live here, we still provide services for them. So, yeah, no, I get that. It's, just doesn't make it sit any easier.
Let's start in a lot, on that subject right there then. Heather, I don't know if you have this information. So what are the other cities around us? What's their sales tax rates currently?
Oh, you know, I don't have that information. I'm sorry. Let's see, I know La Mesa is, I think, 7.75. Oklahoma was 9%.
They dropped down a half percent, didn't they?
And I think they dropped down half a percent, that's correct. San Diego is still 7.75, or 7, 7.25. County, county is the same.
And ours is 7.25?
Yes.
Which is the state minimum, basically, right?
Absolutely.
Right there. One of the, one of the things with sales tax, like you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, is that obviously it comes from, you know, everybody who's shopping within the city. So it's not just the citizens, but people who are coming from outside of the city. But it's also one of the things that have brought the people to the city is our low sales tax rate. I remember, you know, talking about, how many years ago, Rob, 15 years ago, talking about that, you know, sitting up there and doing a, a shop and save, I forget the slogan. Shop Santee and save.
Shop Santee and save was my slogan, yes.
Because of the increased sales taxes in the cities of La Mesa and Oklahoma surrounding to us. You know, that being said, obviously, you know, taking that risk of people not spending their dollars here, you know, by doing that, bringing that up. We got four options here. I think there's probably even a couple more options that aren't necessarily discussed yet on the table. You know, we're not going to stick alone for, you know, a certain amount of money. And we can take that, you know, as, absorb that cost, whatever that is, within the general fund. There's, again, I'm just talking total hypotheticals when I, when I say this. There's a lot of different ways to do this, and Rob's right, is that we, we need to be looking at the fire benefit fee. We need to be looking at, you know, other revenue sources. But we need to get it collectively between probably two and three different sources to actually make all this happen. And we are up against a hill, right? This is, this is a long-time coming of services, facilities, apparatuses, staffing that haven't been increased over the years that have kept up with our population within the city of Santee. We know in the 2000s, we actually decreased population. But here in the 2010 to 2020, we increased significantly within population to the city of Santee. And we have not increased any staffing or obviously our apparatuses within that. And like Chief said, we don't have anywhere to put any more people. We don't have any more beds, we don't have any more bays to put more apparatuses. As we add a brand-new BLS unit here, ambulance, because our medical services are so high, I think it was 73% of our calls are, are medical calls now, I think you said?
Above that.
Yeah, and then
We're closer to 80, 85.
Half of those are ALS and BLS roughly, you said before. So we know that the calls keep increasing, the tracking, which you showed us, obviously, every single year over year. The fire station over at the Ops Yard, you know, we talked about that one a little bit before. And, you know, it's, a location is a location, like the chief said. If we had a perfect world where we can start over with this city and we can say, I want one right here in this map, in this location, you know, and like up in your district here in the northern area, we'd put it right in the middle of Timberland and El Paul. You know, slap it right in the middle of the neighborhood because it would be geographically, you know, centered in there. We don't have that reality. We have a reality of this is what we have, the land that we have or the times that we have to work in. Chief, I do want to touch on it real quick, if we would, on some of your construction costs there though. And I know these are complete estimates and I'm not, you know, all to any fire or anything like that. Just doing some quick numbers though, on here. Can you tell us how you came up with these numbers? I know you, obviously, you say you talked to other professionals, other people who have built stations and kind of came up with that. So you want to give some insight or should I just ask my questions?
Yeah. Some of the more recent builds that were started, let's say five, six years ago, they were trending up $800 a square foot. And that was their cost at that time. By the time they were done and new buildings were being constructed, for instance now, newest station in, in the city of San Diego that I just visited and Carlsbad Station that was on here, Station 2, those are closer to $1,200 to $1,400 per square foot. That, that is the cost. That is what it costs to build a station. And talking to, for instance, even Chula Vista's fire chief, that cost that they had years ago for their stations would be astronomically more today. So they were fortunate to start the process years ago. And they admit that the cost of building those same fire stations starting today would be closer to $1,200 to $1,400 a square foot.
Okay, so that being said, I was just, again, doing some quick math here. And that fire station 3, it's about 7,300 square feet, is that correct?
That would be closer to 10,000. 10,000 square feet, two-story.
Okay, I was going off the number on the map there.
So keep in mind, and this is what's been a little bit surprising to me, is keep in mind the size of the station, how big our apparatus are. A large amount of square footage gets eaten up by our apparatus base. And so although it sounds like a really big building, what you are kind of whittled down to for the living quarters is almost half that much. And you have, again, for like Station 4, we have nine people there every single day and then another nine the next day. So they just require a lot of space. A lot more than if you were thinking about a house. Obviously, 5,000 square feet is large for a house, but it is not, by any stretch of the imagination, large for a fire station nowadays for the living quarters.
Can you give me the square footage for the other, the new shop, the Station 4 rebuild and the fourth fire station then? Because I was just going off the little diagram.
14,000 square foot for the third station. The shop would be roughly just over 3,500 square feet.
Okay.
And we were, we were talking with Padre about what their price would be. Unfortunately, I have some resources here in DDS that would, that were able to say, well, that was what Unfortunately, I have some resources here in DDS that would, that were able to say, well, that was what it was years ago. And if we added some escalators and what the true cost is now, it'd probably cost closer to 5.5 million dollars. Now, with that being said, the, I don't have plans to present to somebody to get these true costs. So there's probably going to be some margin of error. Now, Station Four, the expectation is for Station Four to be, to remain a headquarters station, to be a larger footprint, uh, closer to 14,000 square feet. Four bays versus three bays, again, just that one extra bay eats up a tremendous amount of square footage. And what has been shocking to me is that, uh, building a garage essentially in fire station world?
Same cost.
Isn't that, exactly. It's not that much of a cost savings compared to building out the living quarters and all the rest. It's, it's just kind of mind boggling.
Does that include teardown as well? Your estimate? Cause you have to tear down that building.
Yeah, that's a good point, Council Mcnellis. Uh, that does not take into consideration the teardown for Station Four.
How's this construction cost? That's what he's talking about, 1,400, 100 square foot. That's why I'm kind of going with this and then
That's significant.
If it helps to get the job done, we have jackhammers and I got some able-bodied firefighters that love breaking stuff.
Sam?
And then, uh,
You got a dump truck, man.
Square footage? You can count on me for that also.
The fourth station square footage?
Fourth station, the square footage that was being proposed is closer to the fire station that would be our third station, 10,000 square feet.
And on that one, it, obviously your picture did not look like the existing building right now. Are we talking about tearing down that whole building or retrofitting that building?
That's affirmative. In talking to DDS and what the modern construction requirements would be for a critical facility, it would be cost prohibitive to try to retrofit that building as opposed to just a teardown and starting over. And there is some lot leveling that will need to occur. And although the existing structure could get the job done, it could, it's, it's really not optimal. So if we're going to invest in a structure that's going to serve this community for 50-plus years, the, the margin to do it right versus retrofitting and scavenging stuff together, that delta probably is not worth it. Or I should say the opposite, the delta is worth the, the greater investment.
Okay. So thank you for a little clarification on the square footage and the, and the cost, because that's why I was kind of doing the math here. Uh, but the shop number stood in quite a quaid. So that's actually almost $1,500 a square foot at 5.5 million dollars.
We are going off of what Padre paid for theirs. Uh, looks like, uh, my SMEs are, are gone. But Carl might be able to address what we basically took what Padre paid for theirs uh, when it was constructed and we tried to add some escalators for
It's fine at this point, Carl. It's not, it's, it's semantics of this. I was just trying to understand a little bit where these costs were derived from. We, I think we all understand, obviously, this is not any kind of hard cost by any means. But what my concern is exactly what you kind of alluded to initially, and we're seeing it with the community center, is that the cost today, you're talking about 1,400 dollars a square foot today, but you're talking about building these, these things in a, uh, four phases, I guess, I think it was, of, of nature. And with the timeline of two years, four years, six years, eight years, I don't know, I'm just putting two years on everything here. So eight years down the road on a Station Four, which is the last thing in your timeline, I, my mind is significantly higher than 1,400 dollars a square foot.
I don't foresee, I don't have a crystal ball, but I, I don't foresee these getting cheaper. So the longer we delay, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. And again, I'm not an expert, but I, I think that's probably a pretty good yes.
Kind of where I'm going with this whole thing. There's a little understanding of how you derive this from the cost, but it's kind of getting to is that, you know, it's, it's a big number, like you said, 52 million dollars, sorry, we're talking about here. But these escalating costs are going to significantly keep increasing.
Agreed. And that's why I'm saying if, if there was a sales tax increase, it would be for a specific period of time with the sunset. But we would also have to do the other things to help cover those gaps in the future. Problem is, we never did that in the past and even going forward. So it's one, we're talking about 1.4 million, you know, first year in real new revenue for the, uh, fire benefit fee. But as CPI continues to move and, and, and properties, you know, and, and we continue, that number goes up as well. So that we are putting, we will then have money to put away a couple million dollars a year to utilize for more improvements and, and maybe some margin of error, um, 10 years down the line when you get to maybe building the last facility or six years down the line, eight years down the line when we're building the last facility. But between now and then, you, you, you need, you need the majority of the funding ready to go.
I'm good right now, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then. Laura?
All right, thank you. Um, I'm really, uh, excited about the idea of using the Ops Yard as a station. I think that's creative, um, use of that space and, um, it, being so close to Prospect Avenue, it, it would shoot down both ways, my district and up at Lantern Crest as well. So I see that as, as a ideal location. Um, and the fact that we own the land, you know, I mean, that's great. I also agree with, we have to do something about the fire benefit fee, but if there's a citizens initiative for a sales tax, it's probably not the right timing to do it both on the same ballot. And we need the, the biggest chunk of funding up first. So, um, I, I support getting the biggest chunk of funding up first. Almost said something wrong there. Um, I don't want it to be lost in the conversation tonight, though, about some of the efficiencies that I, I think we need to, uh, just keep looking at. And one is, you know, related to call volume and, um, you know, lift assist at Lantern Crest. And I know, uh, Michael Grant was here and said he would work with the, with the chief on that. You know, I have Pulse Point on my phone and I see it pop up a lot. So I know how many lift assists are going, uh, on a daily basis to Lantern Crest. And, and, um, you know, they do have medical staff there and I think it's, it's their responsibility, that's my opinion, to, to help with that or to, to be the first point of contact and resolve those issues on site. But I also understand if someone calls 911, you, you have to respond. So, um, I, I hope that's being addressed as he said it would be addressed. The, the second thing is, um, you know, what I learned really one night at council about, um, how we're responding, it's, it's not just fire departments, also sheriffs, uh, or public safety in general to Los Colinas, which is county-owned facility. And if someone, um, if their medical team inside Los Colinas refuses, uh, to, you know, someone who's going into the, the jail, uh, for medical reasons, then it's our public safety officers uh, that are, you know, taking on that responsibility. And so it's Santee taxpayer dollars that are taking on that responsibility. And it also takes, um, you know, vehicles out of the system, which I'll mention Lantern Crest does as well. I mean, we would be more efficient if we weren't going to lift assist calls or, uh, public safety calls at Los Colinas. When those two facilities, one run by the county and, and the other run by a private entity, have medical teams on site that are supposed to address those, uh, those things. And then, and the third one is, you know, hospital drop-off. And, and that relates to Lantern Crest and, uh, Los Colinas as well, because now you're taking them to the hospital. And then you're waiting one to five hours when it's supposed to be 20 minutes. So that takes a vehicle out of the system as well. So those are efficiencies beyond this budget that I feel need to be addressed, um, quickly. So those are my comments. And, um, you know, thank you all for showing up tonight.
We are working to address many of those, you know, you, you mentioned three issues, but we, we are continually trying to address those issues. Michael Grant and I exchanged some emails, asking for some data. We've yet to pinpoint a date to get together and talk about this. But I'm confident that we will at some point and, and talk about some possible better models. And, and we do believe that our EMT unit will be able to assist with that moving forward. Is right sizing the, the, uh, level of response to the level of call. We've talked about the hospital offload delay issues a long time. And our intent, and we have been meeting with hospitals, I actually have one more tomorrow. Uh, our intent is to start billing hospitals for our offload times. It, it equates to tens of thousands of dollars a month minimum between us and Lakeside. It is a tremendous drain on our system. Um, it's already generated a lot of discussion around the county. I've fielded a lot of phone calls and had a lot of meetings, but we're trying to move the needle. We are trying to move the needle on the offload delays. Now, the jail, that's an interesting beast because I, I do got to applaud our sheriff's department because they, they do a great job of working collaboratively with us. Keep in mind, that facility is a regional facility, and so we see law enforcement from all over the county. And there are some chronic, chronic offenders that are not dressed like my buddy over here to my left. And tho, those really are, are the agencies that we need to try to figure out how we're going to address, how they operate as far as bringing people and then releasing them. But we're going to continue to try to, to try to address those issues. With, with that being said, if we eliminated Lantern Crest calls and Los Colinas calls and offload delays, we still have a tremendous call volume. Council Mc, Mcnellis mentioned Fenita Ranch, and we've been talking about that my entire career, right? And we talked about that being this catalyst for adding a station and personnel. But let's just think about this for a second. Since 2000, we have not had Fenita Ranch, but we've had Sky Ranch. We have had Weston. We've had Aubrey Glen. We've had Prospect Glen. We've had Trolley Square going. There was no Trolley Square, right? There, there was no Trolley. We also had the 52 connection and then obviously Lantern Crest, which is a call monster. Point being is, I think that we all would agree that we have seen a Fenita Ranch go in and infill around this entire city. And that always was this catalyst for us to increase our staffing, to increase our, our number of stations. And, and we've seen it and we probably, again, we own this, fire owns this. We should have articulated the need years ago. We are now. And, um, I, I appreciate the position of this council. I, I do believe that this council is the most get-it-done council that I have seen in my multiple decades in this, in this organization. So, point being, we will, we are going to try to address those three issues that, that you had mentioned.
Yeah, I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with the, the number or, or the funding, you know, options and, but I still want to see the efficiencies because, you know, it, it burns me. Like I, I, I pay taxes in Santee. I'm a citizen of Santee and Santee services are being used in ways that I don't think they should be used, so.
Ron?
Can we go back to the study? I think the, the sales tax study was from 2000?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I think the first thing we need to do is get a new sales tax study.
Absolutely.
That was almost scary when I heard that. Um, because really we're, we're dealing with, we're not, they're not even outdated. They're just unrealistic figures at this point. So I think for the next step, I think we should start working on doing that. I don't know if we need a motion for that or not, but I think that that would be the first thing we need to start working, working on.
What we can do is we can make a list of, uh, direction that we want to get.
That's, yeah, that's, that's good. And then as far as the, um, yeah, again, we had, we need to act on some of these things. I don't have a problem putting forward for the, the half-cent sales tax if we need to. That's not a problem. It, it, it obviously needs to be worked on and it needs to be studied also. So if we need to bring people forward to study these things, let's, let's just do that and get it out of the way now ASAP. And, uh, and try and get some of these things set. I, I think we'll work on the, the fire stations, um, Lantern Crest. Frankly, I think they should have a unit up there. That's just my personal opinion. Uh, and I think we should work with Michael on his next, and I've mentioned this a couple of times now, on his next building that he wants to put in all these extra units, should have a, a medic unit there or at least, and, and he needs to build it. And we put a, either a medic or a fire truck, whatever we need, and that should be considered, uh, something we do. He builds it and, um, sorry, you don't like it, but the reality is reality. We, you're there, we're there. So why not just be there if that's the case? And then, uh, and the other ideas I like too, the, the Ops Yard I like. I think that would be good. I don't know if we need to make that even bigger or more people or not, but I'm not trying to spend money. I'm trying to figure out ways of not spending money. So let me make that clear upfront, because if he builds it, we don't have to. So, and if we're, we're camping out there, I just, I did notice today, I looked through Pulse Point as we were talking, and we've only gone there once today, so that's, uh, surprising.
Every firefighter is really upset with you because you just jinxed us for the night.
Yeah, you'll be there all night tonight. And
They're not working tonight.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be on there. Um, the other, the other, um, part is everybody knows, you know, actually, I've used the firefighters more than once, so I can, I can verify they do a good job. But the, uh, uh, the, the delay, that's been bugging me all from, from day one. And I know that we're going to bill them. I don't see them paying the bill, but I know that we're going to bill them. So it's worth a, worth a try, but it also might incentivize them. But have we talked to Sharp and Kaiser? If we tried maybe getting Lakeside and Santee and Oklahoma and saying, listen, guys, you need to, uh, you know, I, I've always wanted to put somebody there just to babysit at that point. Because that's what you do. Once you drop them off, you're, you're the babysitter. And, uh, we've talked about this too. So I'd like to see if, if there's an opinion on that or not.
We have, we've been talking, we've been talking for years and this issue has existed for decades. And I've attended, I can't even count the number of meetings that I've attended personally, talking about this issue and ways to resolve the problem. And, you know, to, to the hospital's credit, I've said it before, it is a complex problem and they're being squeezed as well. And they're trying to find solutions. My heartburn is that there is a line in the sand that exists for staffing ratios for nurses to patients. And that's a line in the sand that they're not willing to cross. And we don't have that same line in the sand for them holding my men and women hostage. And that has been my argument at many places throughout this county, is that there needs to be a line in the sand for holding my people hostage at your facility for X number of time. And that is the major disconnect when we try and talk, is that they have this line in the sand that they are, they want to enforce and they say it's state law, and our line in the sand is somewhat dismissed. And so you could tell I'm a little passionate about it. I'm kind of over talking about it. But we, we, we trying to move the needle. We're trying to actually fix this problem. And unfortunately, as AP Triton mentioned a month ago, um, sometimes people are, are not going to be responsive unless there's a financial impact.
And, and the, the other part is it just, when we're not there, that means AMR is coming into our town. And they're coming over here, taking, picking us up and, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of that too. And it could be even probably, I guess, San Diego could have to show up if they had to. But, um, it would be, that's, that's part of the problem. We're, we're, we're over here sitting at a hospital, you know, maybe. And, and I've, I've been to a few of them. Memorial is one that they seem to want to go to. And Memorial is actually, they're lined up. If you ever get a chance, drive by Grossmont or drive by Memorial and you're, you're, you're seven, eight, nine, uh, medics strong there, just sitting there. And, and that's a problem when they're doing it. And again, some of it is, is, um, is understandable because if the person's in really bad shape. But, but there's times where you're just going, you know, that, that you're looking at him and the guy's fine and he's, but you have to sit, we have to keep, we have to pay our firefighters and our medics to stand there because a hospital will not accept them. And that's what I, again, that's what we need to change. So I would, I would want to see a, a half-cent sales tax studied and, uh, and, uh, a new, at least a new sales, uh, do, do study on that. So, and if, if we need to get in some of the fire units, let's do that.
Wow. A lot to be talked about here. And I look out here. And I look out here, and I, I see the fire chief, and I see Aaron, and I see Justin, probably some of the guys that have been here the longest. We've been talking about this ever since I came on in 2002. I can tell you, we've had councils in the past that just didn't care. You guys just go do your job. Double bunk if you have to. Whatever it took, get the job done. We're not giving any more firefighters, and we're not building another station. You know, and, you know, Station 4 is like an old car. At some point in time, you have to figure out that, when do I stop putting, start, when do I stop putting money into the old car and just get a new one? It's kind of the way you have to look at it. Question's going to be is, you know, are you guys going to be around to see this happen? Because you're going to be retired probably if we don't do something now. Heck, Dustin, you came up tonight, you haven't been on the department that long in the big scheme of things, but you might be ready for retirement. You might even be sitting over there talking to the council about, yeah, I remember way back when, when we talked about this. Or you know what? You're going to have a lot of firefighters, a lot of guys, I, I recognize you because I see you around, but I don't always remember your name because you haven't been around very long. But you know what? You guys may not stick around because you're overworked. We try and pay you well enough and give you good benefits, but you know what? Sometimes that's good, not good enough. So time is right for us to do this. How do we do that? I can tell you, I'm not necessarily in favor of the safer grant. And the reason for that is because it's good for three years. And let's say I hire, you know, six or eight firefighters, and at the end of it, we haven't figured out a way to fund those six or eight. So who do I lay off? Or do, does it, maybe we get lucky like last time, and it's through attrition, and we're right back down to the same number of firefighters that we have today. I would support this wholeheartedly though, if we could find a funding source to go forward with the 12 officer firefighters that you're talking about. And I think we can do that. Because three years is a long time in the big scheme of things, but it's really a short time also. So, so that's, that's a concern that I have with, with getting grants like that. You know, we talked about the shop. I asked this question yesterday. I said, does that shop we have now have any lifts in it or pits or bays? And you know what? The answer is no. For some of our fire trucks, we have to drag them outside, lift them up, or just drag them outside so that we can put the hood up on them. And that doesn't even make sense anymore in today's world. You don't go and get your car fixed at some, you know, collision repair center today or, you know, you know, someplace that does mechanics on the engine and expect them to work under the same kind of conditions. You probably wouldn't appreciate paying the price that you pay for it. So what do we do? Lots of good discussion up here by each one of the council members. I think we're all opposed to any kind of sales tax and have been for a very long time. But where has that got us? It's put us into a position now where we have to think about, how are we going to build the infrastructure for our public safety members? Like I said last time, I would support a sales tax. I agree with Ron. We need to get an update on what that means, because I can guarantee you, it's more than $5.1 million today, especially with all the new business and stuff that we have in town. You know, we did really well through COVID. We didn't, we made money actually, or some cities lost money. My guess is that if we find out what that real number is, you know, who knows? We may not need to bond for 30 years or even get an annuity for 30 years. It could be 20 years, because a sales tax might, you know, really click up very quickly. So, so that really should be things that we need to know. I've talked to a lot of people in our community about this, and they've talked about, you know, I don't really mind paying for a tax, but they agree with Rob. Needs to be a sunset on it. When I can see what's being built, you know, that my fire station, my firefighters. What's that? Oh, citizens, yes. That's what they say. So, so they, they want to support, they want to build you what you need, because they know that you're going to use that station, that equipment, and the additional firefighters to make sure that they're safe in their community. And so when you think about it that way, we don't, we don't, it's a no-brainer. Got to do what you got to do. You know, sometimes I have to go get a loan to buy a new car. Had to buy, get a loan to buy a new house. Didn't like it. Had to, you know, get a part-time job to pay for it sometimes. But that's what we need to do here. So my recommendation is, let's jump on that study that Ron's talking about. Let's find out what the real numbers are. I don't like the idea of going out for anything that goes on the tax roll, because it is unfair for somebody that has been in their home for 40 years to pay, you know, 50 bucks, and somebody's been in it for five months to pay $5,000 or whatever it would work out to be. So, but, but I want, I want us to also consider this as not a special tax for just the building fire departments and, and funding firefighters. I think we come back with something later on with the fire benefit fee to do that. This has got to be something that looks at the entire infrastructure of our city. And, and it just so happens that this is a portion of our infrastructure that needs to be addressed first. So.
And you may have just lost me.
Lost you out.
Said, I would be in support of a half-cent tax potentially with a sunset on it to fund the needs of this. I'm not, I'm not in favor of it.
Well, there, there are a lot of reasons though to fund other activities that go in our city.
I am on record saying that.
Okay, well, I, you know, I would feel the same way too, if I didn't want to make sure our roads and everything else are taken care, our city hall's not taken care of, or the operations. You know, I would be against it also. But in this case, I'm not. So it's just an idea that I'm throwing out there for us to look at. So that's where I'm at. Question, do you have enough direction on this? All right.
Yes, council, we do. Thank you.
I actually like to elaborate a little bit further. So it, I also, I mean, I didn't really talk about the options entirely. So general obligation bond, not in favor of either. Option one, I think we do need more information. I mean, a study or whatever, we got, got to get more information. But that's part of the conversation, things that you're talking about, things you're talking about, is what does that actually look like at the end of the day? You know, that's, that's part of the conversation of where we go with this, the fire benefit fee, other current economic development or economic development in the future, the way those funds get spent and, and how they get spent. It should be part of the, the conversation in the plan. But I do think we need to give direction to the fire chief today to start with that million dollars of seed money that we have, have sitting there right now and move forward with, you know, a plan. And this is something we talked about, I've talked about for the last six months, is we need to develop a plan. You know, everything else to this point has been an idea, you know, and, and we need to start building a plan. And some of these details from, are going to fall into place, some of the information from the studies, some of those things that the fire chief already knows are all going to be part of this decision-making in, in this conversation for, to come back to us with, to make a decision on which direction to go. Just want to add that in there.
All right. Let's move on then. That takes us to new business, item number 17, recommendation from the Salary Setting Advisory Committee regarding compensation for the mayor and city council, and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Who's going to give us the presentation?
So, sir, I have the chair of the Salary Setting Advisory Committee here, Justin Schlafly, and he's going to speak about the suggested changes in the compensation and how they arrived at those numbers.
Thank you. Welcome, Justin.
All right. Thanks for having me. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Justin Schlafly, and I'm proud to serve as the chairman of the Salary Setting Advisory Committee. We also have a couple of members of the committee in the audience. But before presenting our recommendation, I would like to pause for one minute and share that we have several important visitors in the audience tonight. We have quite a few students from San Diego State University here. Go Aztecs! And they are here to learn about how government business is conducted. These students are studying transportation engineering, and perhaps some of them will one day consider being employees of our fine city. Talking with the firefighters, supporting them, it kind of shows what support we do for staff and, and how much the community values our community and nice things. So with that in mind, I'll move forward with the Salary Setting Advisory Committee recommendation. I want to thank my fellow members of the committee for their hard work and thoughtful service to the city. In addition, I want to thank our wonderful city staff, particularly the city's clerk, clerk's office, for their research and incredible support for the committee. It's a tribute to staff's hard work that we were able to reach our recommendations in a single meeting. They provided a lot of research for us to review in a very timely manner, helped walk us through many things. So this year, I, I feel we operated very efficiently. So thank you, staff. We had our, our single salary setting, let's see, Salary Setting Advisory Committee meeting on April 4th, 2023. As mentioned in the staff report, the Salary Setting Advisory Committee meets in odd years, which are non-election years. So that happens every other year. The committee reviews information related to the mayor and council salary and benefits and makes recommendations to the city council concerning such. So we view our role as making a recommendation. It is your role to act on that recommendation, whatever manner you see fit, taking into account the numerous constraints that we have in our budget and, and other things that we on the Salary Setting Advisory Committee are not fully aware of. This year, the committee had three main recommendations. First, we recommended an increase in mayor and council salary of 5% in fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and a 2% increase in fiscal year 2024 to 2025. Primary considerations for committee members voting aye on this measure, or on this recommendation included a strong concern about significant and substantial inflation, which has eroded the buying power of wages over the past year. It was felt that a recommendation of 5%, followed by a later increase of 2% the following year would fall within the state guidelines for annual increases and would be a reasonable measure to at least keep some pace with inflation. It could be argued that that was the minimum, and that was certainly part of our deliberation discussion. So we saw this as a minimum level of increase that would be desirable to the citizens of Santee in attracting and compensating high-quality leadership and ensuring that they are adequately compensated for countless hours of hard work on behalf of our city. It is likewise our hope and expectation that the city council and leadership will give equal consideration for the devastating effects of inflation when evaluating staff compensation in future as well. Second, the committee recommends an auto allowance increase consistent with the city of El Cajon, being $550 per month for the mayor and $450 per month for the council. Primary considerations mentioned by those voting aye were that auto and gas costs have increased substantially over the last two years, and the fact that the city of El Cajon is similarly situated as far as an area in the county with drive time and, and things being very similar. So for example, the distance of travel from Santee to downtown for a Sandag or MTS meeting is very similar for the city of Santee as it is for the city of El Cajon. So looking and reviewing the rates for other cities in the region, that was a primary factor in our recommendation and why we suggest just going with what the city El Cajon did. We think that's fair. Our third recommendation is to make no increase in technology or any, or technology, let's see, what do we call it? We call it a technology allowance or any other cell phone or other allowances. So we voted to recommend that there be no other changes. So our two changes that we're recommending, again, 5% in fiscal year 2023, 2024, and 2% fiscal year 2024 to 2025. That is the same for mayor and council salaries. So that is our first recommendation. And our second main recommendation would be to change our auto allowance to $550 per month for mayor and $450 per month for council. Third recommendation is no other changes. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and I'm here to answer questions.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any staff reports or anything on that? Just this one? Okay. Speaker slips?
One speaker, truth.
Robin, Dustin, I got a joke for you. Shop the state where it's never fair. So the Traffic Advisory Committee's Justin Schlaffey, he has no idea how many times I brought his name up at the County Board of Supervisors meetings. Salaries and traffic, wow. So the Salary Setting Advisory Committee convened and decided that the mayor and every council member deserves a 5% raise. Only committee member DeMore voted against these salary increases. I remember hearing last meeting on April 12th that it was actually just a simple technical error and that the increase should have already happened, but this item doesn't state that anywhere. I'd say if someone who's a public servant does their job and keeps their word, which is rare these days, then they deserve their pay that they earned. If they abuse, berate, and betray the public like, say, disgraced narcissist Nathan Fletcher, then they're unworthy of any pay and should immediately be removed as soon as possible, which is 99% of politicians. What I want to understand about the justification for salary increases is the comparison to salaries and benefits of other elected city officials in the county. Why the comparison? Everyone should be making what is reflective of the community that they represent, which includes consideration of what the city budget can balance. I would also argue, if other cities are going to be used as a threshold, then let's compare tonight's Santee City Council to last night's San Diego City Council. Their meeting yesterday was over 11 and a half hours long with only about a two-hour break in the morning. Have any of you council members ever attended a meeting requiring that level of endurance? But don't get me wrong, they're not doing anything good at that city council, and I'm glad they got a long earful yesterday, including from myself. But if we apply the concept of equal pay for equal work, then they would deserve a higher salary based on the level of attendance and endurance. So I wouldn't recommend comparing other city official salaries because that might actually decrease what you could be owed. Regardless, approval of this item means these council members will get paid $13,300 more over the next two years, along with $450 a month for auto allowance for John, $400 for the rest of the council members, as well as $90 a month for tech allowance for each council member. You guys aren't even teleconferencing, come on. Should be zero. But the important question is, will any of you council members vote no to this item about increasing your own salaries and allowances? That'd be strange, right? I don't know, Dustin. This extra money could go to paving roads, something to think about. It's $3,000 a month for John and $1,780 a month for the rest on this council. According to this item's salary chart, Santee's actually paying on the high end for a mayor. So I'm going to say I'm in opposition of any salary increases. We need money for new roads and new fire stations, as we have heard tonight. Thank you.
Is that it?
No, for the speakers.
Okay. Laura?
Just a point of clarification. The prior council meeting where we discussed our salaries, that was because there was a clerical error. This has nothing to do with that. This is moving forward, not what happened in the past. So for a couple of months, we were being paid the wrong incorrect amount based on the current budget, and this is looking forward at the next two years. Now, as far as the vehicle, actually, I, I tuned into Santee TV and caught the, like, the last end of the Salary Setting Committee discussion, in which I've never had the opportunity to see before. So that was, you know, it was, it was really great discussion that you all had, and, and I understood why the gentleman voted no. I mean, his reasoning was because this Salary Setting Commission comes with recommendations to us, and then we inevitably say no. And, and an example is, the last time, I think it was the last time, they, they said we should all have 50% raises, and we said, no, we'll, we'll take what the staff is getting. So his, his point was that he, they don't want to just meet and, and come up with these recommendations and we not do anything about, you know, like we... and we not do anything about, you know, like we, but the reality is, we're going to do what we feel comfortable with, too. So where I'm comfortable tonight is actually postponing this decision until we see the budget and see what we're going to be able to afford for staff as well. I think we should be in line with what they're able to, you know, what everybody's able to get. So that's my recommendation for the item tonight.
Ron?
Well, actually, the only thing I was going to suggest is maybe a higher technology because we do go, just maybe 100, 120, depending on that. We do use our technology. You have to always have unlimited data. We're always on the phone. We're always, you know, at home, we're always on the computer here. You know, it's not like we work here at the office. You know, we all have businesses. We're part-time here, but we all have that. So the technology, we're, you know, we're always dealing with it, and that's one thing I'd like to do is maybe raise that a little bit.
Ron?
I've been a big fan of parity for the city as a whole. I really think that's where we should be, much like Vice Mayor Koval has stated. I think we wait until after we see where the budget is and what we are able to afford for the rest of the city and be more and stay in line with that. We all work for the same city. If there is something more with regards, you know, that is different from the job, as Councilmember Hall had stated, with whether it be technology or auto, that's different because other employees don't have the need to travel to the extent that we do. And if they do, there's a company car that they can utilize. We are our own company car. We are our own insurance for that and liability for that. And as such, it's, it's, I understand that part, and that does make sense. But as far as the percentage or anything of that nature, I think you stick to, just like we do with everybody else, you stick to the same percentage goes kind of across the board, and that's why we always kind of think like that when we are discussing those items. And I like the fact that we started doing that in the recent years, and I would rather continue doing it in that manner. No more, no less.
I too, in favor of the maximum increase being equal to whatever we give to the staff. So once we determine that, I think that could be part of our discussion if we do get any increase into our salary. I actually am in favor of the recommendation from the Salary Committee for the auto allowance increase and not in favor of keeping the technology as is.
Yeah, but you know what? If we give ourselves 5% now and 2% later on, and it looks like that the staff wasn't going to be getting that much, we can always guarantee they're going to get as much as we are. Just saying.
5% on $1,700 is a big difference.
You know what? Got to get the city manager and the finance managers heart pumped some way. So, no, I agree. I think that what I'm hearing is a, you probably need a motion to table or just bring, direction to bring it back?
No, I think you've given direction that the city manager can get into your budget discussions.
Okay. So we'll bring this back and hear more about, yeah, during the budget hearing. So, all right. That sounds good. And item number 18 is a appointment of second alternate to the San Diego Metropolitan Transit System. Finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Ron, you want to speak on this?
Sandag, we have three members that can show up at Sandag meeting, and because of the MTS's current environment, I'm feeling it's probably a good idea to have three members here. So I'm going to recommend Mayor Minto be the...
We do have one speaker, Mayor Minto.
Oh, sorry. Third alternate. So he could, second alternate on that. And that way, I know that we are running into a small dilemma. Next month, on the 18th, we're again going to attempt to pick a new leader to replace Nathan Fletcher, and we're going to see what we can do. I was going to be out of town. Laura was unavailable, so by having the third member, it would help out. I am going to be at that meeting now, but it's still a good idea to do that.
Sir, the speaker slip?
Truth.
Increases for all while public speakers like myself get zero allowance to be here. It's so fun. A second alternate to the MTS board, huh? Which one of you want to hear or see more of me? That's the question Ron got to, right? And he got to see some other people that I actually spread the word to and brought to that meeting. I didn't know that would happen, actually. It was great. But really, I think the question would be, who's got the guts to clean things up at the MTS board? Because clearly, it needs some serious cleaning up. It's not just that scumbag Nathan Fletcher who enjoyed abusing and belittling public speakers, particularly at the Board of Supervisors meetings. There's also his little brother, misinformation spewer Sean "Alo" Rivera. Not only may he be complicit in Nathan's MTS crimes, but he's also not very nice and has chosen to adopt me as one of his new, as one of the new thorns in his side, which I actually take as a complete badge of honor. So we need someone who's not afraid to stand up to these types. I don't know who that is here among you. Last meeting, I played this clip of you, John, where you were all buddy-buddy with Nathan on July 13th, 2021.
Chair, nice to see you again after all these years.
Wonderful to see you, Mayor.
Let me tell you, Santee has never had a very good reputation of working with the county, but I want to tell you that we're here today to say that those days are gone.
Were you just playing the game at that time? Because I do also remember that letter that you and this council sent Nathan a few months before, in February 2021, that sent him into one of his many tantrums. Guess he should have stepped down after all. But who's ever going to take up the second alternate job when it's your time to get in there? Make sure you insist on live video streaming of the MTS meetings, with the videos downloadable off the MTS website, which this city fails to do. And make sure to oppose Nora and Nathan's replacement, probably internationalist Janessa Goldbeck, as they continue to implement multiple conflicts of interest as well as a monopoly on power. So I think I would go with Dustin. If he can resist flowers for paved roads, then at least he's dedicated to his causes and promises. You also said, Dustin, that you don't trust the county, and I very much appreciate that. I even played that clip for the county supervisors in a meeting. It'd be interesting, though, if you were there, Rob. I wonder how you'd do. I wouldn't mind seeing you and Sean butt heads. I don't know why. I predict that would happen. It would be good. Anyways, whoever you guys vote as second alternate to the MTS board, know you're against a wall, Ron knows, but you still need to represent your constituents. Make no compromises with the state and federal carrot danglers and all of their horrible evil plans they do at MTSed. Thank you.
So to answer your question, if you pull up the minutes, I did say we need to start working on televising this.
Oh, great.
At the very last meeting, I said that.
Thank you.
Anything else? No other speakers?
No, sir.
All right, then.
I'll make the recommendation that Mayor Minto is the second alternate.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
And we will need to send that to MTS, so they're aware of it.
Ron it.
Yeah, I know. Okay, that takes us again to non-agenda public comment.
No speakers, sir.
Thank you. City Council reports. Ron?
Well, as we were discussing, May 18th, we will attempt to make a new, find a new chair. There is definitely partisan going on in politics. They want to, there's four San Diego City Council members. Three of them voted against Stephen Whitburn, which is surprising, but they, and they did want to put in Patricia Dillard, who has been on the La Mesa City Council for about three months now, and she has no experience with MTS, but yet they want to make her chair. And so that's definitely partisan going on. We did not, because of the circumstances. Todd Gloria was not there. Sounds like next week, next month, he will be there. So our vote is very important to La Vista and some of the other cities. We're working on it, but it's basically a big argument right now, for better words. So it hasn't improved on the MTS.
Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to give our, the Santee thoughts to our good friend Karen Pearlman, who, you know, she used to be our UT reporter for, what, 20 years? Something like that? I don't know, a long time.
About seven.
I don't know. She worked for the Union Tribune for 25 years, so, but she represented, she was our reporter in East County, and her dog that would attend the meetings with her, Chloe, passed away a couple of days ago. So just wanted to send Karen our love.
Very kind of you, Vice Mayor Koval. That was, that was her family. Like, that's, that really was, and it was always, Chloe always put a smile on everybody's face because she was such a sweet dog, and it's sad.
Dustin?
I just want to thank everybody who came out last night for the town hall here and watched on Santee TV. Got amazing feedback in the last, I guess, 24 hours now, but the last 12 hours, got a lot of positive feedback. So thank you, everybody, again, for participating. It's really good to have civic engagement and having a forum like that where we can be a little more candid and open, opposed to a structured meeting where we can't quite have that open conversation with the public as much. So thank you.
Ron?
Yeah. Councilmember Trotter and I attended Joel Anderson's coffee event prior to the city council meeting. Stayed as long as we could. There were easily 300 people there. There was definitely no parking, but there were 300 people there, and I think the vast majority were there to voice their opposition to a homeless shelter being built in the city of Santee. He did do a survey that originally was only going out to the homes that were within 500 feet of the facility, and later, after some press, I think, got, he did a mail drop with a QR code that opened it up to the entire city, which I thank him for doing that part it made, although it was an afterthought. I appreciate the fact that he actually did go back and get it done. The results were in, you know, overwhelmingly, it's opposition to a facility in the city of Santee. He went on record to state that, we'll wait, it's okay.
It's your world, Ron. We just live in it.
That's right. He went on record to state that, that based on the results of the survey, the only way that he would be looking to build a facility in the city of Santee is if a majority of the council wanted one, and I can't see in any way, shape, or form that a majority of this council would want one. So I think we're pretty safe with not having to worry about that. If I'm wrong about that, all I could do is speak for myself. So the overwhelming response from the community is not just no, but hell no.
Additionally, another piece of data on there, which I found very interesting and reassuring, is that 82% of the community said they agreed with our policy, our new river ordinance that we instituted here in the city within the last month. So I find that very, very demanding, 80, over 80% of the people saying that we are doing the right thing in our policies.
I, well, I commended our city attorney for the wording of that previously, and I, yeah, as Councilmember Trotter just stated, I think the rest of the city agrees with that approval, and thank you again for putting that together. It was very aggressive, and I think you're going to see other cities in the state, if not the country, look to your, to the way you wrote that, to decide theirs. Thank you so very much, and thank you to the people that did, that are maybe watching now or watch us later. Thank you so very much for showing up to that event for the supervisor and voicing your concerns and making sure they understand that, you know, even though there are rules and regulations inside of facilities like that, once somebody breaks those rules and regulations, they're thrown out. They're not thrown out back where they started. They're thrown out onto the streets of the community that they're in, and they become now permanent homeless people in this, in our community. And which means that our, as a city, as an incorporated city, our taxpayers will be paying for public safety, for law enforcement, for firefighters, EMTs, and all of that to show up and take care of them, not the county, the city, because we are in an incorporated city. I think that was just, anywhere in an incorporated city where that funding mechanism is just not there, and let's be honest, the vast majority of the people, unfortunately, that go into those are, do not make it through the program. They, they get kicked out of the program or actually voluntarily leave the program because they would rather not deal with the rules of not being able to do drugs or drink or any of that type of stuff. And then that's how they end up, that's how we end up with more people in our city streets and our river bottom and the like. So thank you so very much to everybody that showed up to that event and voiced your opposition. I believe it really did help, and if it didn't help with the supervisors, I hope it really helped with the members of the Santee City Council in showing where you, where the community stands.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make a comment on that point?
Of course.
Can you pass that down? Yeah, so the survey did come to my house, which I'm grateful for because I, you know, I really was curious to see what the survey was going to say and how people were going to respond. And so, yes, 82% support our ordinance regarding the riverbed. But then the second question, are you concerned that as the new ordinance is enforced in the riverbed with, without a local shelter in place, people experiencing homelessness will move onto the sidewalks and public spaces in a town center? Well, that's assuming the sale and a question, which means basically, oh, yeah, duh, you know, but we don't allow people to camp on the sidewalks. And we all know, the people that live in Santee all know that, you know, there's a difference between a person with perhaps a mental illness that's on the sidewalk. We know those, the people in Santee like that, that are on our sidewalks, and we do numerous, numerous outreach to them to try to help them into a facility. So, but this, the drug encampments in the riverbed are different. I mean, these are people, you know, basically doing drugs down there and cooking meth and all those kinds of things. So it's very different. So, but still, people, you know, 66% said, yes, they're concerned about that, without, I think, not understanding the full question. And then the other question, well, there's only four questions. Do you support the creation of a local shelter to help Santee homeless move into permanent housing and comply with the law? And they said no, almost 60%, which, you know, I think maybe a different answer was expected there, because when you say comply with the law, then people would usually say, yes, I want to comply with the law. But this is also the county not understanding what we, as a council, already do to help the homeless move into permanent housing, how much dollars we already allocate to those, to that. And then fourth, would you like to receive an update? Yeah, they want to receive an update. So, and nowhere in the survey did it say that what the plan the county had put together was, which we saw the, you know, 62 or 64 tiny homes, 128 beds in the middle of our arts and entertainment district. But on the survey, if you don't attend or watch city council meetings, you wouldn't know that that was the plan. And we knew it, and a few people in the community knew it, and the people in the community that knew about it, they're the ones that talked about it, and that's how 300 people showed up tonight.
Actually, there was never a plan, he said. There was never, ever a plan. There was no plan whatsoever to do this in city of Santee in a specific location with a specific...
I saw the document, so...
Diagram. Diagram. He said, there was never a time or a plan.
The diagram just showed up magically.
It did.
Well, regardless, I mean, you know, I saw what, you know, I saw it, so, and I know you're being facetious. But, you know, it's important to stay on top of these things as a community. The county does own land in the, in Santee still, and, you know, they could say, we're not doing this now, but the county Board of Supervisors can change, and we need to be on top of that and watch out for it. And, and I, as I said before, I think I said it to Dan Bickford earlier, you know, the city of Santee does do our part for the whole region, and we have Los Colinas here. So, building a homeless, you know, and that's what, 1,200 inmates or something like that, you know? We support, we are a community service for the whole region already.
A homeless shelter for the animals is coming soon.
Well, that's okay with me. But, yeah, this, I'm glad that so many people in the community did show up tonight and express. And also, you know, one more fact about that postcard, and then I'll be done. It said that our homeless had increased by 134%, something like that, according, and, you know, a little asterisk, according to the point in time count. And so, my, the facts related to that, and you can always skew the numbers when you're trying to prove a point, right, is that 90 of those people in the point in count ti, am I saying it right?
Yeah, point in time count.
Point in time count. 90 of them were, basically, the Crisis House Administration Building moved into the city of Santee a couple of years ago, and the Administration Building just does administrative services. It's not a place where somebody comes for services, but if they don't have a physical address, that location is used as their address. And so, 90 new people were counted in our, in our count, because that Crisis House moved from Alcohont to Santee. And then the, just the admin building. That's, and that's why. It's not that 90 more people came into Santee, but they had that, you know, we have that Crisis House admin building here in Santee now. So, that increased it from, what, 60-some, 60-something people to, you know, add on 90 on top of that. And then the other thing I would like to also mention is that we have the, we don't have our own, we don't have a Santee Police Department. We share the sheriff's services with the county, and, you know, La Mesa has their own, City of San Diego has their own, Chula Vista has their own. If you know that there's this count one time a year, Alcohont has their own, if you know there's this count one time a year, and you're looking to skew the numbers, you could have people move. And if that survey is not asking where you were 30 days ago or 60 days ago, and they're just asking where, or seeing where you are today, because you've been moved out of another community, that would also skew the numbers. So, we need to be very critical of these, this data coming out from the county or these counts, to make sure that it's a true reflection of what our true problem is. And we are, you know, we're here to solve our homeless problem as much as you can solve it. I mean, prevention is really the key. Who can solve it at this point? But, you know, not, we're not here to prevent or solve the issue that quite frankly, we don't even agree with. And I could, then I could go on for, you know, an hour about why I don't agree with state law and things like that.
I'm going to cut you off before you get there.
Okay.
Let me jump in real quick, because you probably know the counts better than I do. But if they see a tent, I think it's like 1.5 people, and, and so, they may not even see a person, but they see a tent, and they count that as a, or they see a certain, a number, a bigger tent, and then it's, oh, there's six people in this, or, and...
They're not going in.
They're not going inside and looking, which is very wise, actually. But they're not going in and looking and actually, you don't see, they're not seeing people, they're seeing structures, and they're counting structures. And that's the part that always has bothered me. You know, I've done these before. They're not a lot of fun, because you're walking through the canyons and tripping and falling. And so, it's, but it's, it is something that the numbers are skewed all, anyway.
Well, I'm not going to say anything about that.
Mr. Mayor, you got one minute left.
Who elected you, Mayor?
Nobody.
I'm going to talk about Lead California Cities. I was up in Sacramento for their Ledge Action Days and had an opportunity to talk to quite a few legislators up there. We were fortunate enough to have one of the Assistant Attorney Generals come in and talk about all they're doing for, you know, law enforcement and fentanyl and all that good stuff. It's killing people out there. And the nice people around the room thanked them for being there and thanked them for all the good things they're doing, and they made a mistake calling on me. I thanked him for being there and, you know, apologized for the nice people for being around the room, but I explained to him I wasn't going to be that nice. And I talked to him about the fact that there is not the support for law enforcement that they are touting. They don't put money in their budget for helping out with law enforcement. They do enough to kind of sugarcoat things, in my opinion. And quite frankly, this is mostly my opinion. And so, then I went on to talk about why his, his boss, the Attorney General, Bonther, was not more adamant about the Public Safety Committee and the Assembly in getting out bills that have called for the higher penalties and more control over the fentanyl crisis. And then I said, his big boss, who's the governor, really failed at his job, because Gavin Newsom should be kicking the behind of those Assembly members who will not let these bills out of the Public Safety Committee. They're going to let them die there. And he tried to give me an excuse, and then I basically said, you know, I get it. If I was one of these Assembly members, I wouldn't want that to come out if I didn't want the children to survive. If I didn't care if they died in our schools, yeah, I'd probably want to see those bills die, too. And that certainly did not go over very well in the room. But the bottom line is that there are some good legislators right now who are trying to, to address some of the issues, and they know that fentanyl is adding to the homeless problem. It's the most highly addictive drug and the most deadly drug that's out there today. And the state government, well, a small portion of the state government who is in charge does not want anything to happen with that. So, so there's a big fight brewing up there in Sacramento, so I'll at least give you that much. And I did get a report on, from their, their budget, and it doesn't show any money going towards the fentanyl crisis. Matter of fact, it's all put together so vague that no one would ever know what the truth is. And so, so we're going to continue the fight. Some new legislators, young, new, fresh, freshman legislators who want to get things done on both sides of the aisle, and that's caused a little trouble up there, because it's not as strong as it used to be. So, we'll see what happens. Anyhow, that's pretty much all I have to report on. And city manager?
No report, sir.
City attorney?
No report.
All right, then. We have no closed session tonight, so I'm three minutes late. Adjourned.